Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS, 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas, 67203.
Good morning, I'm Kristy Zukovich. Welcome to the January 21st Sedgwick County Commission meeting. We're glad you're joining us this morning, and of course, we use this time to let you know about activities going on around Sedgwick County. And commissioners, the weather is supposed to be great again this coming weekend, so of course, we know that's always a good time to head out to the zoo or Sedgwick County Park. And we also have a new exhibit that's opening at Exploration Place this weekend, and it is called Wildlife Rescue. So lots of things to do over the weekend. Also remind you, at Interest Bank Arena, we have Monster Jam on the 23rd and 24th, Wichita Thunder on the 30th, Harlem Globetrotters on the 31st, and Sesame Street on February 6th through the 8th. And of course, tonight, we know the Shockers are in action. They are not at home, so we've got to cheer really loud so all the people over in Springfield can hear us, but 7:05, tune in and cheer on the Shockers, and we'll hope for another win. But commissioners, you know, we do not have a meeting next week, so I wanted to make sure you knew that the Super Bowl was coming up on February 1st, and of course, I thought, well, this gives us a perfect opportunity to have a little bit of trivia. And so are you ready for some football?
Yeah.
And remember, this is a good opportunity for you to be careful, be cautious, and be very sure with your answer.
I'm bewildered.
Okay. So Commissioner Norton, you're first up. Are you ready? You're always ready.
I was born ready.
Okay. This is right down your alley, because I know, we heard you have a little singing and dancing here a week ago, so the Super Bowl halftime performer is Taylor Swift, Katy Perry, Carrie Underwood, or Miranda Lambert?
Wow, that's tough. You know, I'm a huge Taylor Swift fan, but I'll have to say, wow, I forgot. Give me my cues again.
Just be aware.
Oh, I'll pick Katy Perry.
It is going to be Katy Perry.
I happen to like her song Fireworks.
Right. I think Lenny Kravitz is supposed to join her, and I think there's also some surprise guests that might be out there, but they haven't given us any clues. But for sure, Katy Perry, so good job. Way to carry it and start it out for us.
I listened.
Okay. Mr. Peter John, are you ready?
Absolutely.
Okay. Kansas City Chiefs won the Super Bowl, and this is a little tricky, because remember, they had a season, but then the Super Bowl was the next year. So was it 1968, 1970, 1969, or 1970, 1990, 2005, and 2010?
Well, as a Chiefs fan, I would really have preferred to see the answer, number D, be the history, but unfortunately, I'm going to have to be careful and be appropriate today, and I'm going to go with 1970, item B.
It is B. It was the, this is a little tricky one, because it was the 1969 season that they won, but you know, we carry over in January 11th, 1970 was the Super Bowl, so I kind of tricked up my husband on that one, too. He's like, no, you're not right. I'm like, I use Google. Google tells me everything, so, all right. Commissioner Ransaw, we're coming at you.
Be careful.
You be careful. This one's really tricky. If you see a commercial with this, you might buy Doritos, Budweiser, Taco Bell, or Pepsi.
Well, I'd like to say all of the above, but I think I'll go with B.
Okay, that's right. That is the Clydesdales. We know they always have some kind of great commercial for Budweiser. We'll also see, I'm sure, something really unique for Taco Bell, and Pepsi, and Doritos, so stay tuned, as much to watch the game as it is to watch the commercials. Commissioner Howell, you're new here.
I know.
I've tried to pick something pretty easy.
I'd be ready.
Just remember to, yeah, be ready.
I'd be ready.
Set your clock. The game starts at noon, 5:30, 2:30, or 4:30?
Well, unfortunately, I go to church on Sunday nights, I've missed the games a few times, so I know it's got to be 5:30.
It is 5:30. You are right. There are a lot of people who start at noon, and then maybe they miss the game at 5:30. But 5:30 is when kickoff, so make sure you set your clock. All right. Commissioner Unruh, you're going to bring it home for us, and this one is a CBS poll from 2014. So this is what folks, Americans, said in 2014, their favorite food. What will most Americans eat? Chips and salsa, chicken wings and pizza, cookies and milk, or veggies and dip?
Wow, nothing on there about wine, so I guess I'll go with B, chicken wings and pizza.
Chicken wings and pizza, that's, you know, you can't go wrong. You cannot go wrong. Of course, you know, all the others look pretty good, too. And you know, I found these two images, and aren't those really like over-the-top people who've really spent some time? Because usually, I get the bowl, I open the chips, I pour it in the bowl, and we call it good, so that's really taken a little bit of extra effort. But again, Super Bowl's February 1st, good diversion for all of us. We won't see you here next week, but then we'll check in the following week, and we'll have another quiz, or get to know you a little bit more. But lots of important things on our agenda, Chairman Ransaw. We've got an adoption of the safety slogan, we've got a couple of agreements regarding health-related items, we have a presentation on the criminal justice system, juvenile justice system, and consideration of changes to our 2015 legislative platform, and a whole bunch of other things. So I think you should probably get the meeting underway.
All right, I've been waiting four years to do this, so let's get started.
Be very careful.
Well, thank you, Kristy. With that, I'll call to order the meeting of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners for January 21st, 2015. Madam Clerk, call the first item.
Invitation to be led by Pastor Justin Eklund, Pathway Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Lord, we thank you for your promises and your word, that you will provide guidance, that you will provide wisdom, that you will provide direction. And God, we just thank you for this place that we live. We just pray that you would help us to be a light in this world. Father, we pray, as the writer of, as Paul wrote to the Corinthian Church, God, we pray for courage, we pray for strength, we pray that all things be done, and all decisions made in love. We turn this time over to you, and we trust you with all the results. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Let my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, hung nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, very much for being here today. Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, next item.
Rule call. Commissioner Unruh?
Present.
Commissioner Norton?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Peter John?
Present.
Chairman Ransaw?
Present.
Next item.
Appointments. Item A, accept the resignation from Commissioner Dave Unruh from the Sedgwick County Technical Education Training Authority.
Good morning, Richard Houston County Councilor. Commissioners, you've received this resignation, and it would be appropriate to accept it at this time.
Commissioners, you have an item before you. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the resignation.
Second. Any discussion? We have a motion second. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw?
Aye.
Chairman, I mean, Commissioner Norton?
That'd be me. I'd just like to thank Dave for his service to the SCITA Board. He's been on it for several years, trying to make sure that technical education and our partnerships with WSU and NIR and other entities has been rich and full, and has served our community, and I think he's done an admirable job in that. I just wanted to say thanks to him for his service to that board.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I think we all would like a little sentiments as well. Thank you, Dave. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
New business. Item B, adoption of the 2015 safety slogan for Sedgwick County employees. Sedgwick County working safely for you.
Good morning, commissioners, Chairman Ransaw. My name is Diana Mansuri. I am your safety coordinator. I appreciate the opportunity this morning to share our organizational commitment to safety. Without the support of top management, safety initiatives are just not successful. I want to sincerely thank you, commissioners, for your 22 years of support, actually since 1994, for the annual Sedgwick County Safety Slogan Contest, which serves as the county's safety awareness program. Risk management has emphasized safety in Sedgwick County for many years now. Over time, Sedgwick County has developed a positive safety culture as a result of history, work environment, the workforce, health and safety practices, and management leadership. Employees value a work environment that's free of safety hazards. They value the availability and the use of personal protective equipment, especially in the performance of even the most minute job tasks, where the slightest risk of injury or occupational illness may be present. They value creating and maintaining an environment where citizens can rest assured that their safety is a top priority. Bottom line, commissioners, our culture values the practice of safety, not solely because it is required, but also because it is desired. The safety slogan contest encourages employees to submit a safety slogan for consideration. Once it is adopted, the slogan is promoted throughout Sedgwick County for a full year. This year, we received 165 safety slogans submitted by employees from various departments, from many departments, and we want them to know that we very much appreciate and value their support. We look forward to their continued participation, and we challenge them to encourage fellow employees to participate in next year's contests. Each year, we ask selected county employees to volunteer to serve on a committee responsible for selecting the contest winner, so we have a different selection committee each year. This year, the committee was comprised of 21 employees representing 18 Sedgwick County departments, and we very much appreciate their willingness to make this commitment to safety. The winner receives an award, which includes a basket of safety-related items, a framed copy of the new safety slogan poster, and your recognition. Now it's time for the new poster, commissioners. There you have it. The winning safety slogan for 2015 is "Sedgwick County working safely for you." That might look a little familiar. Congratulations to Todd Reynolds for submitting this year's winning slogan. Todd is an employee in the Appraiser's Office. The departments featured on this year's poster are Emergency Management, Election Commissioner's Office, Department on Aging, County Clerk's Office, Sedgwick County Park, and of course, the Appraiser's Office. I want to thank Tony Giuliano in Communications, Lori Westfall in Information Services, and Tyler DeBarre in Risk Management for their participation in the photography and design of this year's poster. They collaborated to produce yet another fine safety slogan poster. This will be distributed throughout Sedgwick County departments, and we will do that this afternoon and tomorrow. At this time, commissioners, I recommend that you adopt "Sedgwick County working safely for you" as the 2015 Employee Safety Slogan, and allow me to present the contest award to Todd Reynolds. After adoption, I would like to invite Todd to come up to the podium.
Commissioners, do we have a motion or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the slogan and take the recommended action.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to second Commissioner Norton's motion, and absolutely delighted to do so this morning. Thank you.
Todd, would you please come forward?
One second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let us vote now. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw?
Aye. Now it's official.
Okay, Todd, please come forward. Jumping the gun there.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Todd Reynolds. I've been with the Sedgwick County Appraiser's Office for about six and a half years. I also happen to be the Chair of the Appraiser's Office Safety Committee. I'm responsible for organizing safety training for the staff on a monthly basis, and this information gets tracked and reported to Diana Mansuri in Risk Management, who's very diligent in her approach to safety training. She's been very helpful in helping us secure some of the areas of the Appraiser's Office to make them safer for our staff. She's also very proactive in terms of recommending topics for training and directing me to resources that help us develop safety training on a monthly basis, so I would like to take this opportunity to also thank Diana Mansuri for the tremendous job that she does in keeping the Appraiser's Office and the rest of the Sedgwick County workforce safe. I'd also like to recognize our county appraiser, Mike Borcherd, our safety committee members, and all of the supervisors in our department, who understand the importance of safety and take advantage of the opportunities to discuss safety issues during their staff meetings. They are vital to making everyone in our office aware of safety issues on a regular basis. As you know, many of our staff members spend just as much time in the field as they do in the office, and some of them are on new construction sites where safety is a must, so it's something that we're cognizant of in every aspect of our responsibilities. But it's not only important to the Appraiser's Office, it's important to the entire Sedgwick County operation. The safety slogan that I submitted, "Sedgwick County working safely for you," is just a slight alteration to the Sedgwick County slogan of "Sedgwick County working for you." If the county slogan reinforces the fact that Sedgwick County is working for its residents, it's also important to acknowledge the fact that safety is deeply ingrained in every service that we provide. I'd like to thank you this morning for the recognition, and I would encourage my fellow Sedgwick County employees to continue to work safely for our citizens. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Mr. Peter John?
Well, thank you. I very much appreciate you being here and being able to present the award to you this morning.
Thank you.
Sedgwick County is a 24/7 operation, and it's around the clock, and there's an awful lot of Sedgwick County employees who are working on their own without a direct supervisor who's right with them, or even nearby sometimes, and so being safe out there is absolutely critical, and so I very much appreciate everyone who's here this morning for this, because obviously, the safety of our 2,000-plus employees is absolutely paramount, and I very much appreciate getting an opportunity to have this discussion, and I'm delighted to be able to vote for this slogan, and thank you for submitting it this morning.
Commissioner Norton?
Well, Todd, thanks for participating. I like the slogan, because it does tie into our mission statement. My many years in business with Target Stores and other retailers, I can tell you that there's kind of a twofold thought to safety, and Mick McBride will back this up. You want to limit your general liability and work comp claims, because that's an economics to your bottom line, and awareness is very important to that. But also, there's the human aspect. You want your colleagues, your friends, the people you spend a lot of time with, to be safe and healthy, and be able to work in the workplace without those things that cause trauma to their lives. So it's kind of a duality of why we want to be safe. It is about the people we work with, but it's also the bottom line and the aspect of saving money for the organization that can be spent in a different manner. So thanks for participating.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comment? Thanks, Todd, very much for your efforts in this, and congratulations, and thank you, Diana, as well, for everything you do.
Thank you, commissioners.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Item C, agreement with Central Plains Regional Healthcare Partnership, Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners, and the City of Wichita to partner with the Sedgwick County Health Department under the Project Access Program.
Good morning, commissioners. Adrian Burnletz, interim health director. Before you this morning is an agreement with Central Plains Regional Healthcare Partnership, Sedgwick County Commission, and the City of Wichita to partner with Sedgwick County Health Department under the Project Access Program. Project Access is a partnership program that coordinates access to donated medical care for uninsured, low-income Sedgwick County residents. Eligible uninsured residents are enrolled for limited periods of time to address immediate medical needs. Once enrolled, they have access to a variety of specialists, as well as prescription medication, durable medical equipment, and diabetic supplies. In 2014, Project Access served 1,481 people. They recruited 37 new physicians to participate in their program. Donated hospital care is valued at over $5,700,000. Donated physician care at over $2,600,000. They provided $500,000 in purchased and donated medications, as well as purchased $31,000 in medical equipment for patients with city and county funding. The level, the funding level for Sedgwick County, if approved, will remain at the same level for the previous two years at $208,940. If approved, this allocation will be used to fund a portion of numerous positions, as well as pay for prescriptions and durable medical equipment. I ask that you approve this agreement and authorize the Chair to sign. We also have John Rozell and Ann Nelson in the audience with us today from the Central Plains Healthcare Partnership, and they have brought with them a couple of special guests that would like to say a couple of words about utilizing their services.
Thank you, Adrian. Before we take comments from the commissioners, I'd like to open this up to the public for anyone who would like to speak, including Rozell. Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Lisa Oderizzi, and did you say address?
Yes.
Was it 1523 West 4th Street in Hayesville, 67060? Good morning. As I mentioned, my name's Lisa Oderizzi. I'm a contractor for the American Red Cross in an accounts payable position. Without going into great detail, I had an incident happen in my life where I basically had to start all over and move in with my elderly parents and needed some medical care. My doctors suggested Project Access so that I could have the blood work that I need twice a year, and medication to get my health back on track. As I mentioned, I'm a contractor. I don't have any insurance at the moment, but Project Access has been a real blessing to me in helping me get the medical care I need until I can get a job with insurance, and I want to thank you for continuing to support Project Access for people like me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Marceline Dover. I'm a tutor at, or you need my address? It's 915 Davis Drive, here in Wichita, and the zip code is 67217. I am a tutor at North High School, and I'm also going to school at Wichita State to become a teacher. And when I was diagnosed with multiple sclerosis, October of last year, I didn't have any insurance or any way of really paying for the care that I needed. And if you know anything about multiple sclerosis, it's a very expensive disease. You have MRIs and neurology visits, so all of that stuff, I really couldn't pay it for myself, so I don't know what I would have done without Project Access. And I just wanted to thank you guys for your support, and encourage you to continue supporting us in the future, so that they can help people like me who need the care that they can't afford their own. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public would like to speak? If not, commissioners, do you have any questions for Adrian? Commissioner Norton?
Well, I'm ready to make the motion to support. I've been very supportive of Project Access since its very beginning. I think it serves our public very well, and I don't know if Adrian has the number off the top of her head, but over the lifespan that we've supported Project Access, and I'm sure Ann knows it, it is multi-million dollars worth of care that's been dispensed by physicians and hospitals, and send the millions. I'd like to hear that number, because I think it's profound to understand that the medical community, the hospitals, the healthcare industry, has stepped up to help take care of the vulnerable, the underserved, folks that are maybe at some of the worst points in their life, and Sedgwick County in a small way has been able to help prop up the organization, help out with prescriptions, and be a small part of that. But talk about the number.
It's been a big part, but thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. My name is Ann Nelson, and I'm the Executive Director of Central Plains Healthcare Partnership. We are a nonprofit affiliate of the Medical Society of Sedgwick County, and we do administer Project Access. We have enrolled 12,340 people in our program from Sedgwick County over the last 15 years, and I'm honored to tell you, we've been able to leverage $170 million in donated medical care provided by physicians and dentists, and our local hospital systems, physical therapists, and hospice care, a full network of volunteer providers. It's at $170 million over the last 15 years, as well as $9.5 million in prescription medications that we've purchased, and been able to leverage from donated medications from pharmaceutical companies. Thank you for the question.
Well, thank you, Ann. I think that's a phenomenal number, and I applaud the folks that are part of the Medical Society and the physicians community, the hospital community, all those folks that have donated. That's a huge number, and it tells how much we care in this community for the underserved, the vulnerable, those that have health problems.
Absolutely.
And I think, you know, we talk about Kansas being a caring state, and this is one way that that manifests itself. It's the government and private industry and the physicians that help make this happen, and I'm going to be supportive of it anytime I'm ready to make the motion, Mr. Chair, when it's appropriate.
Okay, I think we have a few more comments. You may not want to stray too far, Ann. I don't know who the questions will be for, but Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me ask a couple of questions, because my understanding is that, and I think this is more for Ms. Nelson, but let me throw it out there. My understanding is the City of Wichita supports this program, too. Is that correct?
That is correct. Over the last 15 years, our three funders have been Sedgwick County, the City of Wichita through its CSBG program, and the United Way of the Plains.
What level is the City of Wichita donating to Project Access?
We've incurred two funding cuts from the City of Wichita because of reduced CSBG money at the federal level. And our contract two years ago had a cut of $25,000, and in our current funding contract, they cut an additional $50,000, so we've lost $75,000 over the last two years.
So you're at what level?
$175,000 from the city.
Okay. Does Project Access get involved in any legislative issues up at the State House?
We do not lobby. We speak with legislators at times, but we, and meet with state officials from time to time to share the Project Access story, but we do not receive any state funding.
You're not funded by the state of Kansas?
No.
Okay, and you're not a, you're not a, you're not a firm that, there's no lobbying?
We don't have a registered lobbyist, no.
Okay, or as an organization, you're not?
No. No.
Well, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a specific question, but just want to make a comment indicating my support for this item. I know we don't have the motion just yet, but it seems to me that this is worthy of the support of Sedgwick County in light of the fact that good partners have been working on this now for several years, not only Sedgwick County and the City of Wichita, but the United Way, which indicates community support. And I think the Medical Society, as they work in this project to get professionals to donate time, and the volume of not only time, but the amount of money that's accumulated that's a value of their services, indicates a couple of things. One, there is a need in the community. And the other thing is that how important this seems to be, not only to the medical profession, but also to the rest of our community. This is a way that we can kind of take care of our own business here in our community. We've got people willing to do it, and I think we should continue our partnership.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to make a, understand a couple of things. Does the City of Wichita have the option to use property taxes to increase their funding if they wanted to? Could they increase it to a higher level than they currently do if they wanted to use other sources of funding?
Well, I'm not an expert on the city budget. That would be a question for the city council, but we have made that request. Is there any potential for funding outside of CSBG? We've made that request.
Okay. And just for clarification, our funding that we provide from Sedgwick County is, in fact, funded from property taxes. Is that correct? Do you know? Can we confirm that?
Mr. Manager, could you answer?
Property taxes make up a majority share of our revenue, but we have other revenue sources, too, yes.
Okay. And then just for clarity also, the funding that the city uses is essentially passed through federal funding that they receive and then pass on to Project Access?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, just a couple of points. Number one, I do, I love what Project Access does. I think it's a good program, and appreciate the generous hearts of those that do provide surgery and services to the people who definitely need that. And I appreciate what they do. However, it is a principle I have talked about in the past, and I mentioned this to you yesterday in my office and to a few others, that generally speaking, I don't think that the government can, the government shouldn't have a role of being charitable. And what I mean by that is, although we have a compassionate heart for those that have needs, it goes without, it goes with understanding that when we take someone's tax dollars, that we have a responsibility to use them for essential government. And in doing that, we have responsibility to be accountable and be efficient and effective in what we do. And so I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the arrangement we have right now. Let me ask another question. Do you have any other sources of funding besides those three that we mentioned so far?
Yes, we do, Commissioner. We have implemented a comprehensive development plan over the last couple of years. Our board is very actively engaged. We have a development committee. We're pursuing foundations. We're doing some significant research to identify new funding sources, develop a major donor list. We have been able to raise some funds to make up for the loss in city funds, and we continue moving forward with that development plan so that we can continue to broaden our base of support.
Very good. Well, I didn't happen to notice yesterday, and you received a pretty sizable donation, made the newspaper yesterday. And I didn't know about that until last evening. I would have talked to you about it earlier. But anyway, I guess the point I would make is that, is that I do like what the program does, but it does make me a little bit uncomfortable knowing that there are people out there that are hurting in our own community. We don't give them a choice on whether they can pay their taxes or not. We take it really without the permission. And with that, we have responsibility to use that money for essential government. And so this is a little bit uncomfortable to me to continue this at the level we have been in the past. But anyway, well, thank you for what you do, and I appreciate the program overall. I just wish there was a way to see it more from charity and less from tax dollars. With that, that's all I have. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Ann, could you clarify for the record the grant that you just received?
We received a one-time gift from the Kansas Health Foundation in the amount of $50,000. We met with them in December and said that explained our funding situation, and they were very generous and sent us a check two weeks later. We're very grateful for that gift.
Very good. Thank you, Ann. Any other questions or comments from Commissioners?
Well, I'm ready to make the motion, but I really don't see what we're doing as charity. A lot of this money goes for propping up the organization so that they can have a system that works with the physicians, with prescription and pharmaceutical companies, with the hospitals to make sure the system works. It's not about directly taking the money we give and giving it directly to an individual. We're helping the infrastructure that aids the physicians and the hospitals and the pharmaceutical companies and the personal folks, folks that help people with the therapy get through this. So I see Project Access as just the hub of the system, and we're helping prop that up, which I think is a good use of money. And then the charitable donations really come from the physicians, the pharmaceutical companies, the hospitals. In fact, we, you know, we have hospitals that have missions about charity care and uncompensated care. So I guess I see it just a little bit different, that our money helps the hub of the system so that it functions in our community as opposed to just directly giving money to folks. I see it just a little bit different. With that, though, I will make the motion to approve the agreement and authorize the Chair to sign.
I will second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Commissioners, Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the dialogue of all my colleagues, and appreciate the comments in terms of where we are with Project Access in this program, and appreciate the folks coming out here. The challenge I run into on an issue like this is how to figure out what the optimal amount is that fits in with our budget, our resources, program, what their needs, what their spending's been, what their activities are, and also in line with the steps of where our fellow governing body, the City of Wichita, where they're at. And frankly, I'd feel a little bit more comfortable if we were in step with the, with where the City of Wichita and Sedgwick County would be together on this. And I think I'm going to make a substitute motion that we approve this item, but at the same level as the City of Wichita and $175,000, if I can find a second.
I'd second that motion. So we have substitute motion that's been seconded. Is that all?
Ah, yes.
Commissioner Unruh?
I was going to make comments relative to the primary motion, but I guess they're appropriate now. I just, I just, I probably will not, I will not be supportive of the substitute motion. I think that the request is reasonable in light of the services that are provided and the multiplying effect that it has. And as has been stated, this, the money that we give goes towards the structural foundation of the organization rather than just a straight charitable gift. So I understand that logic. I guess that one of the things I'm thinking about, this gives us a local alternative to some of the issues about medical care that this commission has expressed on at various times. This is our people taking care of our people, and this is a relatively small investment for this government to make in partnership with other governments and with other community organizations. I think it also has to do with what I perceive, it has to do with the moral character of our community. This is a way that for a relatively small investment from Sedgwick County Commission, this can be leveraged to give great support and help to a lot of individuals who have real needs. And it helps stay away from federal programs, and I believe that I'm willing to support the full, I'm willing to support the full request. And that's all I have right now, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Norton was next.
It seems to me over the years that the Sedgwick County number has gone, has fluctuated. In fact, it's gone down, too. As I remember, we were both, the city and the county both were at 250 originally. And over the years, we've diminished that. In fact, one year, as I remember, not all of the money was spent, and we got a refund. The Project Access folks, the board, knew that they didn't need all of it to perform their work that year, and we got a little money back. So I think they've been very judicious with the money we've given them. They've made sure that it was oversighted and it was used for its purposes. And I'm going to be very supportive. I think that they have proved to me, anyway, over this many years, that they really keep an eye on how the money is spent, what it's spent for, and that their mission is to take care of people through the charitable giving of the physicians and the hospitals, and not create a bigger structure than they absolutely need to. So I probably not, will not be in favor of the substitute motion. I think full funding is adequate, right?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think Commissioner Howell was next.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to, to some of the comments of the previous speaker, to the extent that this is, is or is not charitable, I think if you look at the many, many good causes in our community that are charitable, I think the thing that makes them charitable is that they are giving and trying to solve problems and meet the needs of people who are disadvantaged and having trouble. There's a common denominator there. I think this is very much like that in every way, and I would classify this as charitable. And I would tell you that one of the comments I have made in the past is there's a million good things under the sun out there. We want to go out there and look for things to support that have a worthy cause. They're everywhere. Again, I love Project Access. I love what they do. But this is one among many out there that have a worthy, a worthy cause and worthy effort. And so to the extent that the government would select one among the many and support that at a arbitrary value, arbitrary level, again, why $209,000 versus $250,000? Or why $175,000? I don't really know why we would choose any particular level of support. It seems very difficult to say this is the right level, or very difficult to say this is the one thing we're going to pick out of our community to support with tax dollars. Again, I want to be sensitive to the homeowners in my district and across Sedgwick County that say that we have trouble paying our taxes. And the downside of that is eventually you could lose your home. You know, there's a lot of many people, many people on fixed income. For those that have enough and can share with others or are interested in charity, there's all kinds of ways to give. Again, United Way of the Plains is one of the primary sources of income to Project Access. If someone believes this is a good program, as I believe it's a good program, we should, I would encourage people to give money to United Way of the Plains and direct that money towards Project Access. They would be glad to do that, I'm sure. The reality is there's a way to get money from people to this program. It's a worthy program. Whether or not we, as a government entity, should, in fact, levy taxes and threaten someone's, the residence, with non-payment if they can't afford those taxes. Or a worthy program, to me, is a very difficult position to be in. So again, unfortunately, the fact we've selected this one among many, we've selected the arbitrary value, to me, makes this uncomfortable. There are other ways of getting money to Project Access. I hope they have great success in the future. I love what they do. But I do have an uncomfortable feeling about continuing the same, you know, level of support we have in the past. I think this is an appropriate motion. So I'll be supporting the substitute motion. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you. A question, if I might. My recollection is, is while we have spent as much as $250,000 a year on Project Access, I think within the last decade, there have been some years where we've spent as little as $150,000. Am I correct in that recollection? Is there anyone here who could answer that?
Again, Ann Nelson with Central Plains Healthcare Partnership. I don't have those details, although I would love to do the research and get that back to you, Commissioner. I'm not sure we've underspent at the amount of $150,000, as Commissioner Norton said. Given the fluctuation of pharmaceuticals and costs, they fluctuate quite a bit, so it's a little bit hard to project what we're going to spend in a year. We don't know how many patients with brain tumors or diabetics.
My question was a little bit different.
Oh, I apologize.
If I can try and restate it, maybe be a little bit, I'll try and be a little bit more clear. In the time that Sedgwick County has been helping to fund Project Access, I think there were some years, especially early on, where I think we were spending somewhere in the neighborhood of, between, somewhere around $150,000 a year as opposed to, I think the highest we've been was 250,000. But I think about a decade ago, I think we were closer to about 150,000 is my recollection. And I'm just trying to find out if I'm correct in that regard or not.
I do have data back to 2010, and the county contributed $187,400. That's been the lowest. The 2011, it went up to $250,000. 2012, it was reduced because of budget issues with the Health Department to $232,500. Was reduced again in 2013 to $208,940, where it has remained for the last two years.
I was thinking in 2006 or '07, somewhere in that timeframe, you were around $150,000 is my recollection.
I'd be happy to research that and get back with you. I don't have that data in front of me right now.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
Just, that was a point that I wanted to make. I appreciate the information you do have. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I could amplify my points a little bit. Commissioner Howell's point concerning the fact that, you know, we're talking about property tax money here, and all other governmental bodies may be spending from other sources instead of, that don't have the property tax. I think that's an important factor in our deliberations today. It's one of the reasons why I made the motion. I want to talk about the government's spending aspect of it, because at government, the hard part we have is finding out what is the correct or optimal level to set for that spending. And I hear the words, especially coming out of Washington all the time, "Well, we're going to invest." I heard a lot of talk about fairness and equity recently. But investment, I mean, okay, you can say, "We're going to invest in a new bridge," or expanding, "We bought a county building recently," or, you know, "Build a jail" or something. I would take, I would argue that that's really not investment. That's just still government spending. If it's an investment, someone's able to really get a rate of return on it that's measurable. And that's the way the private sector works. Government really doesn't work that way. We've struggled, and that's one of the reasons why at times I've brought up the issue of depreciation, because that's an area that's basic and required in the private sector. But in government, depreciating assets is something that isn't one of the regular features that comes out there. So we're spending property tax dollars here today. I think it'd be, the reason I wanted to get this at this level is I'd like to continue the dialogue. This is a valuable program. It's a worthwhile program. I struggle at coming up with the right amount, but I think the right amount, if we were in the same level with the City of Wichita at $175,000, that's why I made that motion, and that's why I'll be supporting it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just so the folks watching my way of television are clear, the number that has been asked of us is broken down into personnel benefits and payroll, prescriptions and medical equipment, and computer services to maintain the Project Access database. So it wasn't just an arbitrary number taken from the imagination. There's actual facts behind the number and a specific request by Project Access. And this is, I think, our opportunity to be a good partner and enable, this has been stated repeatedly, valuable service in our community, enable them to carry out their mission. I think it's not an inappropriate use of our taxpayer money to help our citizens in this way. And I think it, I really believe that the majority of our citizens would be supportive. So I'm going to support the request, and if it fails, and I will support that we stay equal with the City of Wichita. And I have no idea what's, what's behind their number. But I guess our suggestion is just to go, to go along with that. But I won't support the substitute motion. Should it prevail, then I'll, then I'll support. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Norton?
Well, I guess I have a different take on it. And I understand that we want to keep property taxes in line and as low as we can. But over the years, all the studies that I've looked at, all the information I've garnered over the years, is that the financial condition that drives people into bankruptcy, the number-one issue, is an unexpected health event in their life, not that property taxes went up or down $16. It's these major catastrophic financial things for their family where they don't have insurance.
It's these major catastrophic financial things for their family where they don't have insurance and, and they have a health condition that, that puts them into bankruptcy and financial dismay. So, uh, I take a little bit different take on it. I think we have an obligation, you're right, to take care of people and understand, um, their financial conditions. But over the years, my understanding is that, that it's not a little bit of mill levy up or down that puts people into financial ruin. It's many other things, and one of them is a, a health issue that, uh, they don't have the finances for. So, I'm, I'm willing to move forward on this, but we're gonna vote and go one way or another.
I don't see any other questions, so Ann, I have a couple of questions for you, if I could.
Yes, Commissioner.
Can people, can donate individually to you through your website?
Yes, they can. We have a donate button, very simple. It's PayPal. They can use a credit card. They can send a check.
Okay, what's the website?
CPHCP.com.
Okay. And how many physicians in the community are participating?
We have 630 physicians who donate their care.
And that's about what percent of the overall?
Sixty, sixty to sixty-five percent.
Sixty percent. Okay. As you know, I came from the medical community, and I've spoken about this before. I would encourage the 40% who aren't participating to at least participate to some degree. One patient a quarter or something. Uh, there's lots of ways you can do that, but every little bit helps, and so I would say that. Also, now, as far as how the money's being spent, when we first started this, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't Sedgwick County's money for medical equipment and prescriptions?
If.
And then gradually, we've started paying more and more for personnel, or no?
No, it started out supporting the HUP, which is our direct service staff, and prescriptions and medical equipment. So, i- it's always been allocated in a similar manner that you have in front of you for this year.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion to approve this at the level of $175,000. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Enruh?
No.
Commissioner Norton?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw?
Aye.
So, the motion passes three to two. Thank you very much, Adrian.
Thank you.
And Ann for coming. Um, Madam Clerk, next item?
Item D, amended agreement with the National Association of Counties.
Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Burnletz, interim Health Director. I'm here this morning to present an amendment, uh, in the county's agreement with the National Association of County Officials, known as NACO. The change is only with who administers the dental part of their program. So, their, uh, services are the same that they provide. The program provides discounts on prescriptions, vision care, hearing aids and screening, prepaid lab work, diagnostic imaging, diabetic supplies, and dental care. So, the, the, the change is, uh, they used to, uh, their provider was Carrington, and they have, they're now using Caremark. So, that is the only change in our agreement with this discount program, uh, is who they use as their dental carrier. Uh, go ahead. So, this helps people who are uninsured, but can also complement health insurance and , uh, discount, uh, flexible spending counts. So, I ask that you approve NACO's change in dental discount provider from Carrington to Caremark. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Adrian. Commissioners? Commissioner Norton?
Adrian, is Caremark, uh, do they also have the, uh, prescription drug portion of the NACO card?
Yes. With, with going to Caremark, they now, instead of having, uh, two separate cards, they're combining it all into one card.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Any other comments or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take staff's recommended action.
Second.
The motion, the second. Um, Adrian, I have a few questions. Um, you know, we've had some discussion about whether or not we wanna participate in NACO in the future. And one of the, one of the reasons to continue that's been made is this, this card, because it's a service to our community. Now, I don't remember who I asked, but I asked somebody if there was an alternative, and I was told no, but I did a little investigating. Carrington, uh, a- as you said, used to have the dental agreement with NACO.
Yes.
Um, they have a program called My County Cares, in which we can contract with them directly with a dental card and the prescription card. Get exactly the same thing we're getting from NACO, and I have the information here. Um, the fees are the same, except for the yearly rates, which are actually lower. So, they've sent me some information on that and actually a contract that we could enter into. So, I, I think that we can get exactly the same thing through Carrington and avoid any, avoid the NACO card altogether, and it takes away that reasoning for why we have to be in NACO. So, um, I'm gonna, I personally, I wanna make a substitute motion that we, uh, not approve this, uh, agreement with NACO, and instead instruct staff to, to investigate the program with, um, Carrington and, uh, take the steps necessary to bring it back to us so we can participate with them. Mr. Peter John?
Thank you. I wanna make sure I understood what you, you were saying. You said that this would actually be less expensive than the NACO program with the information you've got in front of you?
For the, for the yearly total cost, I mean, of the com, of the combined things, yes. But all the others are exactly the same price, the monthly cost for, uh, the dental and things like that, or?
And it provides the same level of service?
Same, same thing. Prescription card is free, just like NACO. So, I think before we, I, I think this would be, I, I've talked to the guy from Carrington, and I think this would be a, a good way to go.
I'd certainly like to get more information and have it passed out, certainly. Um, I wanna proceed if we've got a less expensive and, uh, a less expensive program that provides at least the same level of coverage or, um, as, as what we're, what would be part of the existing, uh, agreement that we have with NACO.
Well, I've made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Certainly for discussion for.
Commissioner Enruh?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Adrian, does this card cost Sedgwick County government?
The card itself, no, it doesn't.
Okay, so the cost savings, um, Mr. Chairman, you're talking about, is that savings to the individual user or the, or the? Did you, did you say it didn't cost anymore? Maybe it, that's the cost to the individual user?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, it's, it's, would seem that, that, that rather than proceed with this right now, when perhaps we've got a little, less information than we might, and since we are members of NACO for this year, that, uh, we approve this motion on this, um, uh, change in the provider for now, investigate this, and then be ready to implement it as a new program at the beginning of the calendar year. I mean, it would seem like that would be a reasonable way to do it, rather than change providers for these individuals in the middle of the year. Uh, 'cause this would be a new, Mr. Chairman, I suppose this would be a new contract, so all the people who have the card would have to go through all that again. Is that right?
My, my understanding is the existing people will continue under the current program. And then we could start this new program. There's no reason to start. I mean, we're still a member of, uh, to wait till the end of the year, weekend. We're already a member of NACO right now.
Right.
Continue as is, and we'll pursue this with Carrington. The sooner staff gets working on it, the sooner we can get it done and get going.
Okay, okay. All right. I misunderstood. I thought you wanted to not approve this change.
That's true. I don't wanna approve this change, because there's no need. We'll go ahead and proceed with this next.
All right, so the, so the, the motion would be not to approve this change, and your understanding, Mr. Chairman, is that the current users can just go on with their card now, even though we don't approve the change, and they do it under Sedgwick County? Is that right?
Anyone who signed up with Carrington before October 25th, 2014, will have their participation on.
Okay.
Shouldn't take but a week or two to get this back on the agenda, we'll be ready to go.
Okay, and then, if, if we may continue our dialogue here just a minute, the, uh, the motivation for not continuing with the program right now with NACO is simply because it's with NACO? It doesn't help or hurt the user one way or another? But just because it's connected with NACO, is that, I mean, help?
I, I think this is a better option going forward, period, regardless of whether or in NACO, because we don't have that ties to NACO in the future. And if we wanna free our ties with NACO, then we, then we can without any negative impact to the community.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Uh, Commissioner Enruh, I'm not sure who was, who was next. I'm sorry, I was. Commissioner Norton, go ahead.
Well, I'm not gonna be supportive of the substitute motion. I, uh, we've had a, a good representation and a, and a, uh, chance to work with NACO for a lot of years. I think it's presumptuous to say we're not gonna be in NACO today. Uh, if we wanna have an agenda item at some point and withdraw from NACO, I'm, we'll certainly debate that. But I think today, we move forward with the process that we have through NACO. It's good for the citizens. Uh, there's been some, uh, really good savings to our community over the years we've participated in this program. I see no reason to derail it right now. If we wanna get out of NACO and then find an option for a prescription card, I think that makes sense. But we're kind, kinda debating two or three things at one time, and only one of them is on the agenda. I don't think our representation in NACO is on the agenda right now, so we need to deal with the one and then worry with the other later. We're already a member of NACO for the whole year, and I think we should honor that, stay with the program we have that's been good for our citizens with no additional cost, and, uh, then pursue other avenues if we want to.
Mr. Peter John?
Well, thank you. I, I wanted to clarify, Mr. Chairman, on, on the substitute motion that I seconded. I wanted to get, uh, particularly for the people out there who may have these cards right now, if the substitute motion prevails, exactly how the people who currently have these cards, how would they be affected? Would they need to do anything? How would things change for them? Because I, I agree with Commissioner Norton that we don't wanna get into a broader discussion of other issues. The issue in front of us is this, uh, substitute motion for item D with, uh, the change to the dental de, discount provider from Carrington to Caremark PC. And so, what I wanna do is make sure that when we have this discussion, uh, it's clear not only to the, all, all five of us up here and to the staff and the public in, in this room, but also to the folks who may be seeing this or seeing this later, exactly what we're doing, and if they've got a card, how things would change for them, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, I wanna try and get that onto the record as part of this discussion, and I appreciate, uh, comments that you can provide in that regard.
Okay.
If, if this isn't approved, then we won't be able to offer the discount dental program to our residents. We can continue with the health, uh, discount program and the pre-prescription card, but will not be able to, uh, educate them and inform them about this dental discount program.
When will we not? Effective when?
Well, currently, we're not informing them of this new plan, uh, so.
So, you haven't been informing people about this for how long?
Well, it, it was under, if people are still under the old Carrington, then they're part of that. But the, uh, if this is approved, uh, NACO is working with Caremark on providing one card. So, if this is approved, then we will get that new card that offers all programs on that one card versus two separate cards.
Okay. But this says, anyone who, who signed up before October 25th, 2014, will, will be honored. Since that time, have we, have we been informing them of this card?
Uh, not, uh, under Caremark. And, and Carrington, they, they have changed providers, and so this is just through October, so currently, no. From October to currently, they haven't been educated about.
You haven't been offering that?
Not the dental part, because they changed providers.
Okay. So, there's really no one, there's no existing user of the dental part that would be affected by us not agreeing this, except that you couldn't o, offer it for another two or three weeks until we got something else in place?
That is correct.
So, Commissioner Peter John, I guess to your question, I would say, uh, since October 25th, 2014, we haven't been advertising the dental part anyway, so if we don't advertise it for another couple of weeks, I don't, I don't.
See that there's any change?
And, and as far as NACO participation, I would recommend we go with this, whether we continue in NACO or not. I just said that that's been an issue that's been brought up. I think, you know, if you look at the combination card, which has all of them, the cost for a year is actually cheaper than NACO. So, I, I think there's good reason, uh, so I don't think it'll hurt to hold this off if, if staff can make the presentation in two or three weeks that NACO is better than this?
We'll, we'll be ready in two weeks.
Then, then we can have that. And, and did you have anything else to say? I thought, okay. Go, go ahead.
If you give us the opportunity in the next two weeks, we can thoroughly analyze this program plus, whether you have found, plus what else is out there.
Okay. So, with that, let, let me, uh, withdraw my motion and make another one?
I, I, I will withdraw my second.
I'll, I'll say, I'm gonna make a motion that we table this and instruct staff to evaluate both the NACO and Carrington cards and bring it back to us at a future date when you're ready.
Uh, February 4th is the next week.
February 4th? You think you could do that by then?
Sure.
Okay.
Adrian's gonna do all the heavy lifting.
Okay. So, he's saying, yes, you can.
Yes. I'll, I'll, I'll throw another second out there.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
I think, uh, Commissioner Norton was next.
Well, I, as we go through this process, I wanna be sure, you know, Caremark, when they came here, had to negotiate with all the pharm, pharmacies to be part of, to honor the prescription card. And that took them quite a bit of time, not only nationally, but in our community. And I don't know anything about Carrington, what, what they've done with their prescription part of the card, but they not, may not have as rich and full of a system in Wichita as Caremark did, 'cause they worked really hard to get a large portion of the pharmaceutical houses and community as part of their system. And I would hate to diminish that by, they haven't done that work in our community yet. Now, people that have had a Caremark card, that have gotten the discount, get a new card that is not honored at the place where they're used to going. So, I think we need to be real cautious with that, because Caremark did a lot of work in our community to make that card as rich and robust as it could possibly be for the people that got it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am glad that we've got the substitute motion here and looking at, I mean, one of the things I've learned as a county commissioner, that when we've got multiple providers, we take a look at it. I mean, that's why we go through, uh, the bid board process, and, uh, I am, I'm glad that, uh, if we've got multiple folks who can provide, we look at getting the best value for, uh, the residents here in Sedgwick County. And so, uh, I'm, I'm going to be strongly supportive of this, of the current motion in front of us, and, and urge my colleagues to vote in favor of this, and let's see if we do the best for the citizens here in Sedgwick County.
Commissioner Enruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. Uh, I'll be supportive of the substitute motion. I think it's a good idea for us to defer this, get the information, do some comparison, and then we'll, uh, be making, uh, a decision with full information and our eyes open. That'd be good. Thank you, sir.
Does he know their comments? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Enruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransaw?
Aye.
Next down, please.
Item E, agreement with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for up to $580,000 to prevent and control diabetes, heart disease, obesity, and associated risk factors.
Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Burnletz, interim Health Director. So the Kansas Department of Health and Environment is partnering with seven communities in Kansas based on the burden of heart disease, the risk for type 2 diabetes, and population size. Sedgwick County has a higher rate of diabetes and heart disease than the state of Kansas. This contract provides funding to support implementation of several strategies to address multiple risk factors of chronic diseases. Adults are the focus of these strategies that are divided into two components. Component one, strategies are environmental approaches to promote health, support and reinforce healthful behaviors, and build support for lifestyle improvements. Strategies in component two are health system interventions and community clinical linkages that more directly focus on population experiencing higher risk of these chronic diseases. This is CDC prevention funding, so federal pass-through. If approved, a portion of this funding, approximately $204,000, will be used to add three full-time employees. These positions will be used to implement the project, coordinate community collaboration, and analyze chronic disease on a local level in our community. The remaining funds will be used to support subcontracts with community organizations to assist and implement the project strategies. The KDHE contract is for up to $580,000 to prevent diabetes, heart disease, and obesity and associated risk factors. Some of the partners that we've done some preliminary planning with are YMCA, the Medical Society, City Wichita Parks and Recreation, WSU, pharmacists in our community, and community clinics. Now, this project is intended to span over a four-year fund, or a four-year period, depending on the availability of funds. Some of the local interventions that have been discussed, we're developing a plan for placement of healthier, or choices in vending machines that add some healthier options in our recreation and sports complexes, implement joint use agreements for after-hours school facility uses, such as tennis courts or WSU's tracks, accessibility to walking outside of Wichita on identified potential countrywide walking campaign, and expand access to the one certified diabetes prevention program that we do have in Wichita, and that is the YMCA. We would be conducting usability assessments of electronic health records, improving availability of blood pressure measuring devices, like through loner programs for people. We would be expanding our community health navigators to create referral systems for undiagnosed individuals with diabetes, or hypertension, or at risk, and would be assessing community efforts around screening for hypertension and diabetes. So I would ask that you approve this contract with KDHE.
Thank you, Adrian. Before we have Commissioner comments, I want to see if anyone from the public would like to speak on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Rosella, Medical Society, Sedgwick County. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. This grant opportunity is an opportunity for a variety of partners across this community who work on a daily basis with combating the rising incidence of chronic disease in this community. As Adrian said, our rates of hypertension and diabetes are greater than the state of Kansas. Those problems are not going to go away without a comprehensive, collaborative, community-wide process through engagement of lots of different entities to be able to repeat messages and change behaviors over an extended period of time. This opportunity from KDHE through the CDC is a tremendous opportunity for us to be able to impart on the ground, hands-on, change behaviors, as well as messaging, to be able to improve the rates of chronic disease in this community. There's an impact on our community when we have high incidence of hypertension, of diabetes, that result in lives being lost, jobs being lost, a variety of different issues. And I think it's very appropriate for the county to support this endeavor, to be able to send a message to not only all of the partners across this community that are working hard developing this plan as coming up out of the ground, but also sending a message across the state of Kansas that Sedgwick County is very concerned about these incidences of chronic disease, and we want to be able to take concrete action in partnership with KDHE and the CDC to be able to reverse these trends. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Commissioner Peter John has a question for you.
If I could, one of the concerns I've had about this item was how we're performing overall, but let me ask you a broader question. And I know I'm putting you on the spot a little bit, because you have no idea what question I'm about to ask you. How does Sedgwick County compare to the rest of the country or the state of Kansas in terms of average lifespan? Or does the average Kansan, average Sedgwick County resident, their average lifespan about the same as Kansas, about the same as the rest of the country, a little bit better, a little bit worse? Do you have any idea or any data you can provide for us this morning?
That's a great question, and I'm not prepared to answer that. I wouldn't want to take a guess on that, Commissioner. Sorry.
Okay. Well, I throw it out there because that's kind of one of the benchmarks that I come from with this. And the thing I've followed over time is, as I've gotten older, and I guess this is a good sign, they keep saying that folks, you know, folks born today are going to live longer than at any other time in history, and that the average lifespan's actually growing with us today. And that's kind of a starting point that I use as a benchmark. Of course, no one out, no one who's in this room or can hear my voice right now is going to get out of this life alive. So, but when we have these discussions, broad-based in terms of healthcare, I just wondered, you know, how, when it comes to average lifespan, and we've talked, sometimes infant mortality, which is obviously a key, and that's not one of the items here in front of us this morning, but it's one of the key benchmarks in my view. And I was just kind of curious how Sedgwick County, or any subset within Sedgwick County, or the state of Kansas, compared to the other 49 states, how we compare overall. And that's a broader question for another time, but I appreciate you coming down and speaking with us on this this morning. Thank you.
If I may, I might just comment that lifespan certainly is a critical factor, and I think that's a very good question. We should give you back some answers to that. I think another related question is disability, and the result of untreated chronic disease that leads to early diagnosis of disability, which puts a person on a government program to sustain themselves. If we can delay that, and not only increase length of lifespan, but also decrease the rate of disability, I think that'd be a very positive thing.
I agree.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public like to speak on this issue? Come forward, give us your name and address, please. Hello.
Congratulations, Commissioner Ransoh, for being chairperson.
Thank you.
And welcome to, Mr. Howell, for winning, and the rest of staff. My name is Debbie Parks. I live at 8005 North Hoover Road, Valley Center, Kansas. And I would like to speak to this issue because I am a type 2 diabetic. I am insulin dependent. And a program that my primary care physician is encouraging is a program of testing my blood at home with an IONR unit. I'm not sure with how our insurance now, since we are on the United Healthcare System insurance level, is going to support that machine and getting the supplies, and how much of that is going to be out of my own pocket now that our insurance has changed. So if anything with this program, I might be able to seek out to help with my diabetes supply cost. I would appreciate you considering that for others alike myself. So that would be my comment.
Thank you very much.
Stand for any questions?
I see no questions. Adrian, will this have anything to do with providing supplies for patients? Is this kind of a different focus?
This has a lot to do more with prevention. There is a management piece along there as well. The, it's just been preliminary planning, and so as far as the exact strategies haven't all been identified yet.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to speak? See none, we'll come back to the bench. And Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a question. I very much appreciate the email from the Health Department that you sent out with data, because I had been briefed that, you know, Sedgwick County was the worst on a variety of the various measurements. I believe the three that were mentioned were heart disease, diabetes, and I'm trying to remember. I'm looking here at a list that includes six different items. It may have been diabetes, obesity, and heart disease, or maybe it was stroke. But I did receive the Health Department information that covered six areas in terms of obesity, diabetes, stroke, ischemic heart disease, heart disease hospital admission rates, and hypertension. And I want to make sure I understand the email. Do you happen to have that, this email in front of you, or do you have it with you by any chance?
I believe I have that with me.
Okay. I'll give you a minute here, just to, if you don't mind, it'll make it a lot easier, because most of the information came to us here as either from Medicare Medicaid Services, or the Kansas Behavioral Risk Factor Surveillance Survey of 2013. And it basically talks about how we've got a, basically, this is an 11-county program grant with five small counties lumped together. And it lists Sedgwick County, the Health Department information list compared Sedgwick County to the, I think it's six peer communities ranking from first to seventh in terms of best to worst. And the way I read that, best was seventh, and worst is number one. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So Sedgwick County was actually, in terms of obesity, even though we're listed here, and there's a little bit fluctuation, I noticed on the trend information for 2013, referring to Kansas Behavioral Risk Surveillance Survey, the note under the trend information's a little bit different from what's on the main chart. There's 31.8% versus 30.4%. We actually came in, we were second best. Am I reading that correctly, Adrian?
Well, and this chart primarily was just to show those areas that Sedgwick County ranked higher than the state of Kansas. So we do vary with the other counties chosen, but all the counties and communities chosen were based on having high rates of chronic disease in those areas. But yes, it's showing that we're second with the heart disease.
Well, obesity, we'd be second. Diabetes and hypertension, we'd be third, third best, not worst. We were second worst in ischemic heart disease in Medicare population only, and we were third best in stroke in the Medicare-only population. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Because we were actually slightly better than the statewide average with the, in the area of the stroke, heart disease, hospital admission rates, and also in hypertension. But we were a little bit, well, we were worse than the statewide average on the ischemic heart disease. And just so, for my comfort level, I'm a little bit shaky on ischemic. But if someone has COPD, for instance, chronic pulmonary, would that be considered ischemic, or?
I'm afraid I don't have that, know that information.
Okay. Well, the information, I mean, when I was initially presented, I was told Sedgwick County was the worst in all seven, and that's why we needed to go through this program. And I'm looking at the data, and I kind of conclude, we're kind of in the middle of the pack, and some areas were better than average, and some areas were worse than average. And so I have some concerns about this grant, based on the backup data that I have here in front of me. And for a four-year program, I remember a colleague of mine, who's no longer up here on the bench, when we'd have grant programs like this would come up, he'd say, well, you know, we've got positions that come with this grant, and when the money goes away, the positions go away. Now, this grant has, I think, three positions full-time with it?
That is correct. And with two of those positions, if we implement this well, we'll not need to continue after the four-year period. The data analyst to analyze the chronic disease at a local level, we would hope to be able to sustain that on an ongoing basis. But at least two of those three positions would not need to continue after this grant.
Okay. Well, adding positions, we've got funded for a lesson. I mean, that's one of the risks in terms of taking on any of the grant programs. And that's an issue that I think we need to get discussed, and I appreciate being able to bring it forward for consideration today. I'm going to, some of the backup information I have here raised some concerns at my end. And if you've got the backup information that we've got here, I want to bring up, and it's a little bit shaky in terms of, it's listed here as page 96 in my backup, but I think it may be listed as page six or page one. And so I hope you've got in front of you the section that's on the top, it says 1422, grantee strategies and short-term outcomes. Do you by any chance have, there's four different strategies listed on that page, and I want to discuss the first two if I could, and I don't want to make it hard on you if you don't have the material...
I think I have.
Right in front of me that I've got. And so that's why I'm giving you different page numbers, because I've got, there's multiple pages here as part of this 1422. It's the KDHE Community Guidance, and it starts out on page three, and I'm over on, they've renumbered it. It goes page three, four, five, and then goes back to page one. So it makes it a little confusing, Adrian, and I hope you bear with me here while I'm trying to...
And you're on the short-term outcomes?
Excuse me. Are you talking about page 96 in the agenda packet?
Yes. Yeah. Do you have that, Adrian?
That's right. Yes. Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay. Because I wanted, under item number one, it lists here as part of the strategies with this grant, that we'd be implementing food and beverage guidelines and sodium standards in public institutions. And I wanted more information, exactly what we mean by this, and what is, for purposes of this grant, what type of, what's the guideline? And are we, do we have some sort of a mandate? Are we going to change how food's served, and in what public institutions, or what would be, what would actually happen with this?
So this would be one of the, when I mentioned the option of healthier options and vending machines, that would be one of the interventions. And there's nothing, it wouldn't be mandated. It would be the community working with the various programs and institutions to educate them on the importance of healthier choices, and the risks of higher sodium intake, and giving them options to reduce that.
Okay. Well, in terms of options, I mean, I think we've got the best food system in the world. The egg, our egg community does an incredible job of producing it. Of course, folks consuming food wisely, I mean, there's problems there. Let me jump on to item two. I'm listing strategies here. It says, and I'm going to read this, including the area that's kind of in brackets, it says, strengthen healthier food access in sales and retail venues, e.g. grocery stores, supermarkets, chain restaurants, and markets, and community venues, e.g. food banks, through increased availability, e.g. more fruit and vegetables, and more low-sodium options, improved pricing and placement and promotion. Exactly how would that work under this grant?
Well, if this grant were, this contract was approved, in the first three months, the partners would be getting together and identifying strategies and plans to address these components and strategies. So there's not set plans that I can share with you, because those haven't been developed yet.
Because the concern I have is, is this is getting us towards the point of more government mandates onto the private sector. And, you know, I have no problem talking about folks trying to provide incentives for folks to eat healthier, exercise more, live stronger. But I, one of the concerns I have here is what we're looking at, and these were the strategies, you go into some of the outcomes that they hope to have it. I mean, the idea of having increased consumption of nutritious food and beverages, and increased physical activity, I think something we all support, but I have a concern with this grant in terms of actually what means we're going to do, because I think the marketplace and people exercising an economic freedom do a better job of that than, whether it's government mandates, or even government suggestions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a number of questions, if you don't mind, Chairman. Adrian, I'm just curious, certainly, there's been some study, I would assume, on why people are obese or have high blood pressure in Sedgwick County. Is there any information to the motivation why someone would make choices to be in those categories? I mean, do we have... I mean, do we have any information as to what motivates someone to make those choices?
Well, part of what this, to answer and part that question, part of what this contract addresses is access to venues that maybe someone that has lower income doesn't have access to. And, for example, the agreement, potential agreement with WSU for people in that neighborhood to access their facilities to be able to exercise that maybe can't afford to pay a, you know, monthly fee. So some of it is access affordability. There's still, even though we think that there's enough education that everybody should get it by now, there's still a need for more education. But along with that is giving them access to make some of those changes. Because we had talked, you can hand someone a flyer and they can, you know, throw it away if they know it. But the importance is to be able to give them tools to then be able to put that into motion. And one of the other, there were several things that we had talked about last week. One of them was working with our local pharmacists in our community so that they are even more engaged with their patients when they're picking up medications and talking to them about medication, their compliance to their medication and taking them as they should and having loner programs for blood pressure cuffs. And so, you know, behavior change is hard. I mean, that's part of what, you know, we're talking about, you say, "Why do people still make the choices that they do?" But part of that is, is access, and that's part of what this contract would help people with.
I didn't get the chance to, to study the report from the state regarding the seven communities they identified as being higher hypertension and diabetic. So I'm not sure, exactly sure what the method of study was. Is this, is this basically based on, is it a percent of the population? Is this the number of residents we have in the community that happen to be? Okay, I see.
Yes.
Okay. So it's a percentage of our population or the total number of?
That, that have these chronic diseases that were diagnosed, because there are a lot of people that are undiagnosed.
Okay. So as I'm looking at the, the strategies, the 15 strategies that are outlined in the handout, primarily, I guess I would summarize them basically as encouraging healthy habits and healthy choices, primarily information-based efforts to try to get someone to make different choices or have different habits. This is primarily information-based is what we're trying to do, is letting the public know there's, there's other options out there and trying to get them to make better choices for themselves. Is that true?
No, I would say that the larger piece, because it is what we can do within our system with working with the grocery stores on maybe placement and accessibility. And again, working with some of the providers on if they have the electronic medical system, just because you have it, it doesn't mean that everyone knows all the ways to utilize that. And identifying one of the components is working with the providers and our clinics with helping them with how to identify people using the chronic medical record that may be, you know, at higher risk for diabetes and heart disease and stroke that they currently aren't, that are kind of falling between the cracks. So it is working with a lot of community members and providers in prevention of these chronic diseases.
Okay. Well, some of the things you mentioned there are the vending machines and the grocery stores and things like that, the snack bars at the sports events and things like that. Those are all private businesses that make decisions on what they want to sell, and certainly their goal is to make money. And they'll make the choices, they make the offer those products because they know what sells, and they will make what people want. So, you know, if I was a businessperson and you came to me and asked me to change my offering because we want to encourage a healthy habit, you know, I'm not sure I would do that, even though you think it's really important. I guess, again, it doesn't change my, my goal as being a businessperson, trying to be profitable in my own business. And so ultimately, I guess, you know, each person makes choices for themselves, each person is sovereign to make choices on their own personal habits, what they choose to do and what they choose to eat and what they choose to buy. And I guess I'm not sure how the strategies can actually impact, you know, we can't, we can't change what the business owner chooses to offer, we can't, can't change the way the grocery store puts things on the shelves. I guess I'm just a little bit not sure exactly how the implementation of these strategies is going to be, is going to be actually put out. Do we have a plan for performance measures of this program to find out how we're doing each year or at the end of four years?
There would definitely be expected outcomes and performance measures that once, if this were to be approved and the planning teams meet, then, and the specific strategies are identified, then those measures would be set up, yes. And one of the local interventions, again, would be supporting the one certified diabetes program that we have in town, a prevention program through the Y. And right now, it's somewhat cost prohibitive for some people because it's like $300 or $400, but it is a certified program that has very positive outcomes to what they do. So one of the possible strategies with this contract would be to supplement or provide, you know, scholarships for people that are at risk for diabetes to be able to participate in this program that provides them support and behavioral change and, you know, ongoing connection for several months. So again, a lot of it is, is access and giving people, excuse me, giving people the tools, you know, putting them in their hands that they can actually use.
Now, I, I notice on one of the pages in the, in the handout, page 99, if you want to go by those numbers, down at the bottom, it says, "Funding is contingent on continued availability of federal funds."
Yes.
I guess I make the point that a federal government doesn't have any money right now. This is certainly discretionary spending on their part to support a program like this. And as I, and I think about the effectiveness of our, of this, of this program, primarily it's telling people things I think they already know for the most part. You know, our public schools are really good at discussing the food pyramid and recommended, you know, calorie intake and how much sodium and how much meat and things like that they should eat. And a lot of effort into the schools. I'm a member of the YMCA, I think they have good, good products available at the YMCA. There's things throughout the community, I think, that provide lots of education and information to the community already. I see this as a parallel effort that may not actually have any, any, something, anything new necessarily to offer. So I guess right now, I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, the federal debt, and I'm not sure this has a, a direct impact on our community. So I'm a little bit concerned about the program as it's been presented today, but I'll be continuing, continuing to think about it, listen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Enru?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Adrian, this is through the Kansas Department of Health and Education, or Health and Environment, I mean.
Yes.
And so this isn't something that we generated here, this came through the State Department of Health, and they identified the areas they think this might have the greatest impact, and they've secured federal funding so that it is not a burden on our local government.
That's correct.
And that the purpose of this is for education and to offer alternatives in areas where you have high incidence of these diseases and hoping that we can change behavior.
And, and working with our businesses and our system to help that occur as well.
And so no one in, at any level of this is going to be mandated to do anything.
That is correct.
Yeah. Gentlemen, we have, commissioners, we have, I think, a program that's come from our State Department of Health, and the Acting Secretary is supportive of this. It's being funded for the benefit of the citizens in this area. It's not a burden on local property tax. As Ms. Parks has indicated, if there's opportunities to relieve some of the suffering or discomfort and help educate others to avoid that, and commissioners, if it's not a burden on our, on our budget, and we have a policy that should the grant go away, the positions go away, the program stops, it would seem to me that it would be a beneficial thing for us to do for our citizens to approve this and start this program. And in light of that, Mr. Chair, if, if you will allow, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the agreement and authorize the chair to sign.
Second. Commissioner Norton?
Well, I sat on the Healthy Kansas 2020 Work Group for over a year. I was appointed by Dr. Mosher, who was the Secretary of KDHE for at least the first term, appointed by Governor Brownback. And one of the things that came out of that, and this was around 150 professionals, elected officials, providers, practitioners around the state that came together to try to discuss the future of the health of individuals and population health in Kansas. One of the things that was, was paramount and obvious is that you spend a lot of dollars on interventions and care, and it's really practical to spend money on prevention, because at the end of the day, it saves lives and it certainly saves a lot of economic dollars. Because interventions and care for somebody with diabetes that has had it for a number of years is very expensive. And if you can keep them out of the system, if you can catch it early, if you can prevent it, then that's good use of your dollars. And I see this grant as doing just that. I'm sure that's why they've moved it forward. The Kansas Health Institute does a environmental scan every year of all 105 counties. They're ranked on the health of the counties and Sedgwick County's health, and that environmental scan rating has slipped every year for the last two or three years. And I think it would probably be good use of monies. I don't know that us turning it down is going to send it back to Washington, D.C. If I had my guess, it would go back to some other counties in, in the KDHE purview. I know that hypertension and diabetes is controllable and preventable, but you've got to catch it early. And part of that is educating populations that don't have a family physician that watches them, that doesn't have a medical home, doesn't have the financial wherewithal or insurance to keep them watching those kind of things. And the cost to our community economically is huge if we continue to let health costs be out of control. So prevention is part of that. And certainly, if you talk to emergency room doctors and hospitals and physicians, these kind of programs that look at the public health and move the dollars into prevention instead of intervention is such, is a good practical manner just economically for our community. Because many of the folks that show up at the emergency rooms have chronic disease, and they're being treated in our emergency rooms, which is not where they need to be treated. So I certainly will be supportive of this today. I think to do nothing is the wrong thing in our community, particularly on these issues of diabetes, hypertension, other heart diseases, and obesity. And I don't know that, if there's portions of the program that Adrian's articulated to us today that we don't think should move forward, let's, don't let that move forward. But there are other good programs. Diabetes alone. I also sat on, for three years, sat on a committee statewide that is dealing with the problem of rampant diabetes growth in our state. And if we just concentrated on that alone, we would save millions of dollars in our community on healthcare costs. So I'm going to be supportive today. I think it's, we'll design the program locally as to what we want, and commissioners can have input on that. But to just say, "Let's not take the money today because we think it's going to save the federal government $580,000," I think is the wrong attitude to have. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I'm, I'm struggling with this, this issue on several, several levels, because as a federal taxpayer, where the federal government's on the books, debt is around 18 trillion, T is a tom trillion. We've got a state budget that they've got problems, and even though this doesn't directly impact the state budget with what's before us today, they're obviously going to have to do some things to administer this, not only for Sedgwick County, but for the other 10 counties that are part of this, part of this grant that's going to incur costs. You know, my concern, frankly, with, you know, when I was told Sedgwick County ranked worst, and we're actually, when I was told that and being briefed on this, and the information I got showed to Sedgwick County, we certainly have room for improvement, but we're not the worst by far, and in some areas, we're actually even a little bit better than average. My bigger concern is, is government involvement in healthcare. It's one-sixth of the entire United States economy. One-sixth, one out of every $6 is a healthcare dollar. I remember a state expert speaking about six years ago, talking about at that time, government spending on healthcare was about $0.60 out of every healthcare dollar. Of course, since then, we've had what passes for federal changes, the federal government's taken over the health industry and expanded their role significantly. We've had the whole issue in terms of where Medicare and Medicaid are going to go, and the federal government's taken over half a trillion dollars out of Medicare to fund Obamacare, and that's an outrage, I think, for anybody who's in the Medicare program or approaching it. The government involvement in healthcare, unfortunately, I think, just raises costs. And in front of us today is not a $580,000 one-year program, it's actually a program that's about two-point, a little over 2.3 million over four years. And, and that's the way I'm viewing it, and that's why I'm struggling with this issue, Mr. Chairman, because I'm not sure exactly, you know, if somebody put 2.3 million right here on the counter and said, "Okay, Commissioner, with the needs in this community, with the challenges that you face, would this be where we'd put that money if we had a free choice at it?" I don't think so. I think we'd be looking at a different approach. And I think in terms of healthcare as an issue, we need to get back to where you've got consumers and producers working together in economic freedom and less government control, less government mandates, less government restrictions, less government interference, and less government bureaucracy. And this grant today, I think, is a reflection. It's not going to cause, and if we don't proceed with it today, I don't know that it's going to do or benefit anyone who is diabetic or pre-diabetic, who has heart disease or is pre-hypertension. The concern I have is that is this the best way tax dollars should be spent? And I'm struggling with it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners?
We do have a motion and a second, is that correct?
That is correct.
Sorry, it's been a while. Okay. Well, I guess I'll say a few things. Certainly, there's money involved here from the federal government, and I've talked about that in the past, my position's clear. But my concern is this go far beyond the money. It's about a program and whether or not it even has a chance to be effective, and this is a good use of time, money, and resources, regardless of where the money comes. Keep in mind, this is coming from the federal government, and these strategies are required by them. And so we're required to do a variety of things, to include guidelines, not just for vending machines, but it says cafeterias and public institution, work sites and other key locations, and there's, it's, there's open link, which should, so it could be just about anything. There's a propensity for government guidelines to become government mandates at some point in the future, particularly when you're dealing with the federal government. We know in some states like New York, there's been some movements to push, for example, the mandates, what size of pop you can drink and things like this. And it's, it's a growing trend throughout the community, being pushed by a variety of organizations, some of which Sedgwick County actually belongs to, which is troubling. But in the end, what we're doing is, the federal government, we're working at the behest of the federal government to change behavior. And I'm not sure that's a function of the federal government at all. And coming from the medical community, when you're talking about these individual health problems, the best way to affect changes of behavior is that the doctor-patient relationship, and this is no substitute for that. I look at these strategies and I say, "I don't even understand how someone could think this is even going to work from a practical manner." You know, we talk about we're going to get together, group together and have strategies and plans. I've been, there's a lot of strategies and plans being developed at various times throughout this community, and I've been involved in some of them. And a lot of people get together and they talk about theoretical things and the things the government can do, and they are so disconnected from reality. You know, I attended one planning meeting that talked about healthy communities. And the speaker there told me, she's from KU, near Wichita, said- And the speaker there told me, she's from KU, near Wichita, said, basically, the reason I'm overweight is not because of my individual choices, but because of society. And we need to think less about the individual and more about the collective. And I, of course, reject that outright. I'm overweight because I eat too much and don't exercise enough. Society is not to blame for my problem, and society is not going to solve my problem. Creating guidelines is not going to solve my problem. Creating a transportation plan that promotes walking isn't going to make me walk. I already have sidewalks I can walk on. So I'm disturbed that we would even think that this is, has any chance of being effective. Because you can talk theory all the time, but when you get down to reality, you can't have collective solutions to individual health problems. These are individual health problems which need to be addressed at an individual level and the result of individual choices, sometimes good, sometimes bad. And it's not the function of government to change my behavior. Not going to work anyway unless you, well, become tyrannical and really force me to do it. And that's not going to happen. But by entering into this grant program, we set the stage for guidelines and things and planning that is counterproductive, unnecessary. We take, we're going to increase our staffing level by three people. That means that's the potential of taking three people out of the private sector who could be actually be producing something beneficial to our community and putting them into a program that is doomed to failure from its very beginning. So I'm not going to be supportive of this motion in case you haven't figured that out. I think there are much better ways to address this. The best way is the doctor-patient relationship, and some of these methodologies are important to people in the private sector, then they can, are free to implement those in the private sector. I think you'll get better solutions when the plan is funded and generated completely by the private sector because it'll be much more realistic about what you can and cannot get done. So with that...
Well, I guess we have. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been thinking about the dialogue, and I appreciate the comments of everybody here. One of the concerns I have with the guidelines and strategies and thinking about it, I, there's a revolt going on in this country. It's a quiet revolt for the most part, although every once in a while, it shows up in places like YouTube, and you see college, I'm sorry, college, high school, high school kids predominantly talking about the mandate mandated foods that they're receiving at their school cafeterias. And that's one of the concerns, that the guidelines become mandates, the suggestions become requirements. And I realize we don't have school food directly in front of us today, but when the kids, you know, basically, when the federal government pays the tune, and they pay an awful lot of the money that comes up in school food programs, I think most of it's carried in the ag department budget or maybe education. I struggle with this today, and that's why I struggle with this grant, and I'm not going to be supporting it today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to address what I perceive as probably some critical comments after this vote is taken today. And I just wanted to make a clear point, and that is, if we would not do this with our own money, then we shouldn't do it. The perception this is free money, or this is someone else's money, and that being the motivator for us to support or do a program, to me, is not good policy. And I have heard people say, well, it's our own money, we should get it back and use it in our own community. Well, to the extent that it does things that are necessary and good and has an effective role in lowering the tax burden or the personal obligation for people in our own community, there may be some truth to that. I would agree. But this is not free money. This is money that essentially is being printed out of thin air or borrowed from other countries and ultimately is passed to our grandchildren. So there is no such thing as free money. And so because of that, if this is not something we would do with our own money and not letting that idea being a motivator for this decision today, I guess I would just say that I would still be opposing this on principle. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, and I see no other comments. We still have a motion. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Peter John?
No.
Chairman Ransah?
No.
All right, motion fails. We, Commissioners, I'd like to take the next item and then propose taking a break after that. Hopefully, this will be fairly quickly. Madam Clerk, next item?
Item F, Set Post-Annexation Hearing Date for the City of Derby, Ordinance Number 2006.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Parnacott, Assistant County Counselor. State law requires you to hold a hearing five years after unilateral annexation by a city that was required to provide a service plan to the individuals being annexed. That's the situation generally where the individuals are not consenting to the annexation. I've got you a map up on the screen that shows the annexed area that was annexed by the City of Derby back in 2010. It consists of about 30 lots, 52 acres total. The lots range from a half acre to 20 acres. It's on 63rd Street on the north side, about a half mile west of Rock Road. The service plan was reviewed and presented by the city at the time of the annexation. I've reviewed it. It's pretty consistent with state law requirements. The service plan was, or the elements of the service plan was sent to the various landowners, and we requested any comments that they had on whether services had or had not been provided. Out of about 30 response, out of about 30 questionnaires, we received two responses, and only one had an issue about street maintenance concerns. We provided that information to the city. The city has also provided us comments that indicate they believe they've provided the services. Today, however, all you're doing is setting a hearing date. So we're recommending that you set this hearing date for February 18th and approve the notice of hearing. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Mr. Chairman, I move we take the recommended action. I second that. Commissioner Howell, was that what?
I just wanted to make, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make a motion that we would accept the recommended action. That's why my light was on, but I'd be glad to second that as well. This is in my district, and I certainly look forward to the hearing.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransah?
Aye.
At this time, we'll go on recess for five minutes, if that's okay. We'll come back at 11:03 by my clock up there. All right, thank you. We've returned now, and we're out of recess. And Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, Resolution to Rescind Sedgwick County Resolution Number 51, 2014, and Reestablish the Animal Care Advisory Board.
Manager is not here.
Mr. Chairman, can you?
Yeah, I'll just, yeah. Commissioners, do you have the item before you to rescind the Animal Control Advisory Board and return it to what it was previously? Any comments, questions, or motions? What, first of all, I'd like to say, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? If so, please give us your name and address.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Charles Feaster, and I live at 9453 North 135th Street, West Sedgwick, Kansas. I was a member of the old Animal Control Advisory Board. Back in April, they dissolved it, made criteria for a new board, and to this date, that board's never been established. One of the problems they had with it was they made five positions on that board that were mandated to be from different particular positions in this county. One was a veterinarian. One was an animal control officer from other city. One was from different places. Only two of them were actually individuals. In the past, the Animal Control Advisory Board was made up of 10 members. Each county commissioner could appoint two people to that board. At one part of the time, we never had a quorum, and that was because several of the commissioners either had only one member appointed to it or no members. Several of the commissioners had all four, two members appointed to the board. The board made up of six people generally. There should have been 10. Here today, I'm here today to say that I would like to see it go back to the way it was. 10 members, each county commissioner appointing two members. At the time, we'd written up bylaws that said that if one of the members that was appointed by a county commissioner didn't attend three meetings and didn't have a good reason for that, that that member be replaced from the board, so we'd have a quorum. If this board gets reestablished as 10 members and I become a member of that board again, part of the things that we'll look at is bringing to you bylaws for that committee. The way it's set up currently with five people that from different positions, actually positions that have to do with animal control, I'm not sure why staff did that. Previously, it could be 10 people, and they could all be general citizens if it was so desired, and that's what the county commissioner from their district wanted. And with that, I thank you for a chance to speak to you and willing to answer any questions you have.
Any questions of Mr. Feaster? Not, is anyone else from the public who would like to speak?
And my name is Debbie Parks. I live at 8005 North Hoover Road, Valley Center. And like Charlie that just spoke, I was a member of the advisory board, serving as Commissioner Ransah's appointee. And just so you kind of know who was on the board before with us serving, Commissioner Ransah's other appointee was Dr. Julie Evans. She is a vet in Valley Center. Commissioner Skelton's appointees, our chairperson that served on our board, was Charlie Fletcher and Bob Dix at the time, but he, I think, was removed, and at least he was not attending. Commissioner Unruh had two open spots, and we tried to encourage him to find people, but he declined. Commissioner Peter John had Dr. Preston Hickman as his, one of his appointees, and he was a vet. And Charles Feaster was his other appointee. And Commissioner Norton had Hal Prester, who was a pet store owner, and he also had an open spot at the time. To kind of go over again what Charles said, to vote on any... To re, kind of go over again what Charles said, to vote on any projects that we wanted to do as a board, we needed a majority of people present to vote on anything. Well, with that many open spots, if any one of us that were present, or could not be present that night, it kind of made it hard for the rest of them to actually take their time to go down there, also the time of the staff person, Sean, to be there. So, we tried to keep each other contacted by phone or email whether we would come that night, so nobody's time would be wasted. One of the things that we were really excited about, we had finally gotten enough of us there to get these bylaws ready to update them, and then the change came about with going from a 10-member board to a seven. And of the five, as Charlie said, they needed to be professional people, which I understand. The vets would give good advice to Sean and the actual staff members of the animal control. But at that point, they could not even get the five. And one of the people that was suggested to be on that board, I agree with, would be a person on animal control from one of the cities with lying in the area. Well, we tried to explain how hard that might be to get a person when Adrian and Claudia Blackburn was still there at the time, that if you have an animal control officer that spent all day at their city job, and then you ask them to come serve on a board down in Wichita that they don't get paid for, you know, it, it was hard to find somebody willing to do that. The dynamics of the people that were on the board that we were serving, we may not have all been professional people, but all of us have animals. My husband will attest to how many that we have, that he wished we didn't have that many mouths to feed, and if I bring one more home, or accept one more stray, that I could go live where they live, out in the barnyard. Anyway, that's beside the point. One of the things that we would like to have done with the support of either the county commissioners, or the people on staff with animal control, was to volunteer and plan and man booths at events such as Equifest, which is held out at the Kansas Pavilions. It's coming up in February again this year. We also wanted to have a booth and man it at the Garden Home Show, which a lot of public people come to from the county, just to let them understand and ask questions of what types of issues come up with pets and animals in both the city or the county of animal control. And also at Wolfstock, which a lot of pet owners come there, maybe new people have come to town, they don't understand the rules of the county. So, we were willing to support staff of animal control, not replace any of them with our knowledge that, you know, we didn't know exactly everything, everything they did every day.
Ms. Parks?
Yes?
Could you?
Wrap this up?
Wrap it up, yeah.
Okay, all right, sure. So, I would be very much in favor of having the 10-member board back, and if the commissioners that don't have an appointee, or don't have any clues, we have suggestions from both vets and other people that went on our board.
Thank you for-
Thank you.
For your testimony. Sorry to interrupt. We typically give five minutes.
That's fine.
Any questions for Ms. Parks? Seen, seen none? Thank you. Anyone else from the community like to speak? All right, very well.
Commissioners, I apologize for being late to the meeting, the reopening of the meeting, but when Mother Nature calls, whom I can deny that call? You have before you a resolution that would repeal the Animal Care Advisory Board and replace it with the Animal Control Advisory Board. As previous speakers have stated, it would go from seven members to now 10 members. And the action is certainly up to you.
All right, any comments from commissioners, or motions to be made? Commissioner Peter John?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I was here when we made the change. I think reestablishing the Animal Care Advisory Board and rescinding the resolution from last year, I think would be the right step, because this, this board does serve a significant and a needed function. I think having 10 members with commissioners appointing two each, I think we can get past some of the problems in the, in the last. We don't need this board all the time, but when we do need it, we do absolutely. It's one of those things, it's sort of like, like having a levee, when you, it's not going to flood all the time, but when it does, I think the board's important. The fact that we haven't been able to fulfill the membership and get it going again since we, we made the change last year, this is a step in the right direction, in my opinion. So, I'm going to make a motion that we rescind Resolution Number 51-2014, and reestablish the Animal Care Advisory Board.
I'll second that motion. Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I support the change when that occurred, and support staff's work. I think that this is something that's not the highest priority on my agenda, so I'll be, I will vote with what I think the majority of the board will, will do at this time, and support the motion. I, I did want to say, just kind of editorial comment, that I'm sure Ms. Parks was not saying I didn't have a clue of that. Thank you. I'm kidding, Debbie. But anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, has seen no other comments? Madam Clerk, call a vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransow?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item H, Resolution Repealing Resolution Number 146-2014, and Establishing Fees and Charges for Planning and Zoning Application and Proceeding.
Commissioners, the, the resolution before you would repeal the fee increases back to the levels that they were in 2003. If this, if this resolution is adopted, it will cause two different sets of fees, one for the city and one for the county, which was found to be undesirable. If this also resolution passes, it would reduce approximately the funds to the MAPC is by $7,500. Mr. Chairman, you're, I would suggest you proceed any way you choose.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, is anyone from the public like to speak on this item? Seen none? We'll go to Commissioner Unruh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just need to be reminded, Mr. Manager, who all worked on developing the fee schedule as it stands now?
John, do you? I'd ask John Schlegel to answer that question, because-
Thank you.
Please.
That was done by planning staff.
And did you have input with, from the building?
Yeah, we had taken this to the Wichita Area Builders Association. They have a community development committee. So, we took it to them for discussion, and they were not, they are not opposed to the fee increases.
All right, thank you. I am supportive of the recommendations that came down through the planning commission and, and from our staff, in light of the fact that we don't have objection from the people who are involved in the, in the building and construction trades. I realize the fiscal impact is not, is not overly significant. It does shift some of the funding of this back towards property tax, rather than a user's fee, as it works out. So, so I would be supportive of leaving the fees and charges for planning and zoning to the way that we approved them a couple of months ago. I think, you know, we had long discussion at that time, and I guess we don't have to rehash all of that, but that's all the comment I have right now.
Commissioner Norton?
Bill, or maybe John knows, when was the last time, prior to this change in fee structure, that the fees were altered or changed at the city or the county?
2003.
So, 11 years had gone by, and since we had done anything with the fee structure. Okay. It seems to me that we've just made corrections that were a natural part of, of the changes in fees and permits and structure, and, and cost of doing business for the public. It didn't seem like at the time that there was a lot of pushback from those that were paying the fee structure. And, and you said, Bill, it was $7,500 is all the extra that it'll garner?
Yes. Approximately.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. When this issue came up, I was originally in the minority, and we were trying to send a message out that Sedgwick County is open for business, and we're raising fees for, as part of the cost of doing business here, and I had concerns about it at that time. So, I'm certainly going to support the resolution to rescind the resolution that I voted against last year, and which was enacted into county law, and I'll make, I'll make the motion that we repeal that, that resolution, and put in place the charges that had been in place prior to that resolution being adopted, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. I'll second. Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was, I was reading some of the information in front of me as you were speaking, and I may have missed the point that, can you, can you explain, please, the, do the fees that were in place before the change happened, did they not cover the, the cost of government that, that, or, you made the point that someone said they were depending on property taxes to backfill the other, the other costs, and so can you talk about that a little bit, please?
Fees that are collected when we take in applications cover about, it ranges between eight and 10% of the department's costs.
Okay. So, the rest of the fees, even under the new fee structure, is still, the majority of that's still being funded by property taxes?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One more comment. This action we take has no effect on the city fee schedule?
No.
So, our, our efforts at consolidation and making things more efficient and understandable, we're now going to split that up. We'll have two fee schedules, one city, one county, and, and I just, I guess my point is, is that we're kind of going a little bit, it seems to me, away from a unified and, and coordinated effort in, in trying to manage this from the government's responsibility. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Seen no other comments. I'll make a few, few comments myself. I was also in the minority last year when this was passed. When I was briefed at the time, I was, I was told that this will hurt the little guy more than the big guy. And, and I think that's exactly true, as do all taxes, regulations, and fees hurt the little guy more than the big guy. I was concerned, you know, instead of increasing fees, I think we could reduce our costs. And I think that's what we should, should do, and I think we need, as we go forward, continue, look to do that in the future. My understanding is, the builders said that nobody wanted a fee increase, but they were not going to oppose it. And they may take that position, but that doesn't mean people out there, the little guys out there, who it just doesn't affect adversely. It was an across-the-board 15% fee. It doesn't appear to be, just across-the-board 15 fee. Some of these things, I think, need to be revisited in the future, because I'm not sure there's any connection between the actual cost to do them or not. But nevertheless, I think the best thing is to, if we want to talk about economic development, then we need to make it less costly to do business here. And as far as the double, the two fee schedules, depending on how this goes, if this goes, if passes, I'll send an email to Sedgwick, to the city of Wichita, and ask them to do, do the same thing, repeal it, because the overall revenue was $25,000. So, I didn't think, really, it's worth $25,000 to, for implementing across the fee, across the board 15% fee. I don't want to hurt the little guy any more than what he's already been hurt. That, Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just throw out, you know, I had been told 15%, and I went out and cranked some of the numbers, and actually, as the backup says, it was 15%, or rounded to the nearest $5. So, some of them were over 15%. And I realized they hadn't been changed in a while, but we're still struggling as an economy, and anytime the government's putting additional costs onto doing business for everybody, the little guy, the big guy, or anybody in between, that was the reason why I voted against it, and that's why I'm going to vote for this motion this morning. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call a vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh?
No.
Commissioner Norton?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransow?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item I, Resolution Repealing Resolution Numbers 193-02 and 74-2014 Regarding the Sedgwick County Storm Debris Disposal Policy.
Commissioners, the item before you would repeal the storm debris disposal policy. That was created out of some work that was done in the Solid Waste Plan in 97, and a committee put together in 2000 with local governments' appointees to, to come up with this policy. This, this action today would repeal that storm debris policy. I would recommend you do whatever you want to do.
Okay, Commissioners, do we have any comments? Commissioner Norton?
Bill, what are the ramifications of repealing it? Kind of go through what that does, particularly to small cities.
This, this was established to help smaller city, to help cities and, and the county to deal with storm debris. We've had one use of this in the last 14 years, or 12 years or so, and that was the city of Hayesville a couple of years ago. We've had a number of storms, but some of them did not meet the, meet the criteria, some of the community's expenditures did not meet our threshold of, of criteria for them to participate. So, this fund was available for those incidences that would occur in the county that we, that we had previously, that small cities had a difficult time with, with storm cleanup, and what to do with the debris.
And where does the money come from that funds that-
This comes from-
-to do that?
Sorry. This comes from the solid waste fee that we establish every June.
And is there a specific set aside, a dollar amount that's set aside for storm debris cleanup?
Yes, it's 480 thou, we have a fund balance of about $480,000.
Okay. Did we use any of this money in Oak Lawn when the tornado went through?
I, I don't know, I don't know that.
Well, it seems to me that it's, it's a good policy. It helps clean up events that rise to the level of tough for a small city or municipality to clean up, but doesn't qualify for a FEMA designation, which a tornado or a big event would. But some of the ice storms and everything that we've had really have put a burden on citizens, and I think it's a good use of that storm debris fee that we have. The other part of it is citizens pay that fee, and it comes back to them as they need it to be used. So, I'm going to oppose this. I think it's a good use of that fee structure that we get from the fee that we incur every year, and that, that goes up, it flexes up and down as we need money to refill. So, I'm going to be opposed to this today, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Commissioner Peter John?
Just a quick question. I understand, if we, when we created this in 2002, it's only been used once since that time, Mr. Manager? Okay. And it's only used in an event that does not qualify under FEMA.
Yes.
An event, can you amplify a little bit on that, sir?
Well, if it doesn't qualify as a FEMA event, the local municipality is not going to get reimbursed for disposal of debris, and that's why that provision was, this would help. When we have windstorms and ice storms, oftentimes they're not FEMA-qualified events, but they still leave a mess for the, for communities. storms, oftentimes they're not FEMA-qualified events, but they still leave a mess for communities.
They certainly can leave a mess, and we certainly, an item we've struggled with. And I know we've done some heavy lifting in the past, but I know, I know when we had the Oaklawn tornado, our Public Works folks did some heavy lifting down in that area. But this program, and they certainly did also some heavy lifting in terms of debris when we had that storm in West Wichita later on. But it's one of the reasons why I had had some concerns in terms of how we had this, how we had this policy and how it was operating. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Manager, we can still, if we deem it necessary and appropriate, support the smaller communities with storm cleanup, and we can access the same source of funds, it's just we don't have a policy regarding it.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
We have a motion yet?
No.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make the motion that we repeal resolution numbers 19302 and 74-2014 on the storm debris disposal policy.
Thank you.
I would second that, and I have a comment as well.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. I guess, you know, trying to reduce, I guess, amounts of government and regulations and complexity in government and all that. I appreciate the comments from Commissioner Andrew in this discussion, because again, if the county commission has the opportunity to use this money as needed, there's solid waste disposal fee, money set aside that is available to be used, should the Board of County Commissioners see a need for that and make that decision, then I don't see a need for this policy as it sits. I would support the motion. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any more comments from commissioners?
I'll just say, I'm going to support this as well. As has been said, this has only been used one time in fourteen years, and that one time has been documented in the past, it was used inappropriately. City of Hayesville did, you know, the intent of this was to reimburse cities for tipping fees. That was clear in the history and the original resolution. They submitted a claim for over seventy-three thousand dollars for tipping fees they did not, in fact, incur, because they dumped it out their own waste site. So if we have a policy that really has never been used except once in fourteen years, and then it was used inappropriately, we subsequently went back and the majority of the commission changed the policy to make it okay to do what they did, but it really was an inappropriate claim at that time and not the original intent. I don't think it'll have any negative impact on communities. All the cities have storm contingencies, et cetera, just like we do. And if you have a policy that's not needed, then it should be rescinded. So I'll be supportive.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Andrew?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransau?
Aye.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item?
Item J, update the Sedgwick County two thousand and fifteen legislative platform.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kristi Zuccovich, Communications Director. As you know, we had discussion last fall about our two thousand and fifteen legislative platform. And as we've said for every year that we've had a platform, is that it is a living document because we don't know what changes might emerge in the legislative process, and we don't know what changes we might want to propose to our platform as the session goes along. And so today, I bring you six proposed changes and four new items to add to the platform. You do have the summary of changes before you that have been proposed and the corresponding new items that are on the back. And I will briefly go over the items just for clarification. They are in your backup. And again, the platform as adopted is provided to you, does not include these proposed changes at this time. D1 is about eminent domain, and that would have a change of language. D3, unilateral annexation, a change of language. D5, maintaining open government, a proposed change in language. D14, county sales tax, this would change items, and we'll talk about shuffling of numbers here in just a little bit, that would be a change of language as well. F8, tax equity part two would have a change of language. F2, Sedgwick County Health Department, a change of language. And the new items, D14, drivers' permits for illegal aliens would be new. D15, zoning and comprehensive planning would be a new item. D16, municipal elections would be a new item. And D24, Kansas Threatened and Endangered Species List would be a new item. As you see, adding these additional items to the platform would cause some technical changes of some numbering as we have it currently, and we would take care of those issues after they are approved. And any items after they approved, we would adjust the platform. We would make sure that it is available online in the newest version possible.
Thank you, Kristi. Before we go to commissioners, I want to ask if there's anyone from the public would like to speak on this item. Seeing one, okay. Please give us your name and address.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and members of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, John Todd, 1559 North Payne, Wichita, Kansas. I have read over the changes that you're suggesting, and I think all of them are good, and as a citizen would recommend that you make these changes. I wanted to make a couple of comments. You know, the founders from the Constitutional Convention discussed the role of government, and it's always been an issue. In recent years, we've taken the position that government is the solution for everything. And I want to, there was a former Speaker of the House, and his name doesn't come to memory, Commissioner Peter John can probably help me, that says, "All politics is local."
Tip O'Neill.
Tip O'Neill. What I see here happening today is refreshing. I see a change in moving away from the role of government that we've had, that government is the solution for everything. And I have to think about, I didn't bring the quote with me, but I'm going to go on memory, former President Ronald Reagan says, "Government is not the solution, government is the problem." And for me, as a citizen, watching the commission, the actions today, what I'm seeing is refreshing. I think this is what the citizens want, and I compliment local government for taking the position, the initiative of moving us back to the direction of where we let the wealth producers of the country, the private sector, create the jobs and do those things that they do so naturally for themselves. There's a role of government cartoon that Gary Varral did in the Indianapolis Star that shows a popular way of governing. It shows both parties, actually, kicking the seventeen trillion dollar, it's actually eighteen trillion now, can down the road, and looking at who is going to be paying for these things. So pushback on federal money, I think is very appropriate, and I compliment you for that. So if anyone's interested, I'd be glad to supply a copy. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Anyone else from the public like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll return to the bench. Any questions, comments, or motions from the commissioners?
Chairman.
I think Commissioner Howell was first.
Thank you, Chairman. I just have a question. Are we going to be discussing and voting on these individual items? Are we going to do this as a solid?
Well, we'll do whatever the will of the board is.
Okay.
I mean, if we want to do the whole thing at once, or talk about individual ones, or pass the majority and talk about others, that's up to the-
I guess I'll just sit back and see what happens for a few minutes. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to suggest, and since we've got a whole bunch of items here and we're at the bench, I mean, if any one of us has a concern about any one of these items, would like to discuss them and vote on them separately, I'd certainly be supportive of that and give everybody an opportunity to discuss them in detail. I have one minor change that I'd like to make on one existing item that's listed here as change, but we've got some significant resolution positions here that would be certainly noteworthy and I think very newsworthy. So, but I wanted, I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, that we proceed with allowing any commissioner to raise any concerns that they may have about any additional, each one of these items, whether it's a change or if it's a new item. And I think the public discussion here would be very helpful if, because there are some significant positions that are here, and I know some of us have been discussed on at least one of these items, where we've had some folks asking us about what direction we'd like to take county policy. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone object to going down through these? And we've already had public discussion, but let's just start with the first one, eminent domain. Are there any comments or changes? Commissioner Norton? I mean, Commissioner Andrew, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Norton. I got you. And I agree with the first item that we're talking about, eminent domain. However, it seems to me there was one facet of the conversation on this in previous discussions that would this prohibit Sedgwick County, should we have to take property for some public purpose, not private economic development, which I don't think any of us are for? But if we took a piece of property legitimately, we had to work it out through the courts and all, took property for a legitimate public purpose, and there was a piece left over that we didn't have any use for, would this legislation prevent us from letting some entrepreneur have that piece of property for his, development of his business?
Well, I'll respond, there's not a specific piece of legislation in mind, but this platform, I don't believe would. The intent is to not support taking private land for the express purpose of giving it to another private entity-
Yeah, well-
-in the name of economic development.
All right. Well, I'm good with that. I just thought if we had a leftover piece, I didn't want a policy like this to keep us from being able to let somebody have it that needed it, so.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the dialogue on this with Commissioner Andrew, because the terrible U.S. Supreme Court decision in the Kewo case is just an outrage. There's been efforts to address it. The state law was modified, but I think Sedgwick County would clearly be, and I plan to support this plank, would clearly be in support of protecting the private sector from basically having people take, government taking their land for purposes as odious. And this has actually happened in Kansas, and it's been noted in at least one national publication that I'm aware of, where the private property was taken from a Kansas taxpayer and given to another Kansas taxpayer because they thought they could raise the, the local government thought they could raise the assessed value on the property, because it went from a used car lot to a premium new car lot. I won't mention the brand because I don't want to embarrass them, but that did happen in Kansas, and I think that's why I'm going to be supportive of this change this morning. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, we'll move on. You'll allow an annexation? Any questions or comments, changes? Commissioner Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, in general, in sympathy with this platform change, however, I wonder, the word eliminate, I know some of us may be in favor of eliminating that. I'm not sure that eliminate is where we want to be. That's like total and complete. And so I'm not comfortable with that word, just as my comment on the proposal.
Okay. I'll just respond, it says reduce or eliminate. I am comfortable with this because we're one of the few states left in the whole country that actually allows this to happen. And we have examples where this has been abused, particularly in my district, and create a lot of turmoil with landowners, et cetera. But then we have examples, I believe it's Mulvane, in which they've been able to successfully annex people with five-acre lots by petition. And so you can get it done, and obviously, most annexations occur when they develop, you know, ask for it. They buy, they purchase land, want to develop, and ask to be annexed. All the other cities and all the other states are able to grow this, I don't believe this would hinder them, so, but that's my position. Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While I agree with you on the substance, if Commissioner Andrew wants to have a separate vote now and express his opposition for the record on the language that we have here, I'd certainly support his ability to have votes just on this one item, if he'd like to. And any of us up here wanted to vote against it. But I am also supportive, based on your comments in terms of this language, but I do want to make sure that everybody's rights are protected up here in the commission in terms of being able to have input on each of these proposed pieces of our legislative platform.
Just to clarify, my intent is, as we go through these and we allow for comments, if a commissioner wants to make a motion to change one of these, then feel free to do so. Commissioner Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to voice my response, that I'm fully aware of my prerogatives as a commissioner, and I can make a motion, and I, but I appreciate the coaching, though. But I'm aware of that, so thank you.
Seeing no motion, we'll go on to the next one, maintaining open government. Any questions, concerns, changes? Seeing none, we'll move on to county sales tax. Any questions, changes, comments? Oh, wow. Well, let's just start with Commissioner Andrew.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just so I understand this, this is an amendment to our platform that states that we would, that we have the option then to eliminate all property tax for a sales tax. This is not saying we want to do that, it just says we have that option and that we need expanded authority to levy a sales tax. Am I understanding this correct? Is that what this is saying?
I believe so, but I think I'll allow Commissioner Peter John to respond to that, if that would be okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The intent of this is, there's two parts to this, Commissioner Andrew, and I'd never defer to try and coach a person of your wisdom and perspicacity, but I would want to point out that under current law-
I'm trying to say, I know a lot. Thank you.
Well-stated. There's two issues that I'm trying to, that we're trying to come up with with this language. At the moment, Sedgwick County has a one-cent sales tax, and we are maxed out under state law and cannot exceed that amount. And seventy-three cents out of every dollar that is collected from that sales tax does not come to Sedgwick County. Sedgwick County does not spend that. That money is actually spent by all the municipalities, twenty municipalities in Sedgwick County get it, based on a formula of their population by each municipality. And interesting, and slightly perversely, the higher their mill levy is, the more money they get under the formula. And so the intent on this is to try and give us more flexible, more flexibility, so that if the majority of this commission wanted to go forward and do this, and take this public policy step, we could do so under Kansas law, which currently we cannot. And so there's two aspects of this, obviously, trying to give us the flexibility so that if we wanted to replace our sales, I'm sorry, our property tax with the sales tax, and I would mention just for the record, the folks in Lebette County have a modified and slightly smaller version of this, and the voters renewed that sales tax last November by a sizable margin. But the intent of this language is to give us more fiscal flexibility and the authority under state law, which currently our hands are tied by state law. Commissioner Andrew?
Commissioner Norton?
The only thing I don't see in here is that it'd have to go to a vote of the people, and that language would, I think, be very important. Although, I'm really not in favor of moving totally funding the county to a sales tax, but if it ever got to that, it needs to be a vote of the people to move it that way. And that's not in this language at all. So I don't support this in general, but I also don't support it because it has no voting language in it, to move it to the taxpayer, to make a vote that they want to move everything to a sales tax or a combination thereof. That's all I have.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you. I agree with Commissioner Norton that having a voter requirement is an absolute necessity, but since the current state law requires any changes in the sales tax to get voter approval, I- I view not having that as basically somewhat redundant. It's asking you to basically say that we want to have what's already in place again, and that's not, the effort is, is try and give us the option of being able to proceed. But if there was a, if the majority of this commission wanted to add in a sentence that says we'd like to have, and this would be all approved by the voters, I'm very comfortable with that addition, but I don't think it's necessary. Thank you.
Well, I think we all agree that it should be subject to a public vote, that if we want to put something in there, we can. If someone wants to make that motion, otherwise we'll proceed. I think we're all in agreement and understanding that this would be subject to a public vote. Seeing no motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second, if Commissioner Norton wants to make a motion, I'll-
Well, my motion would be that we not include this in the whole realm of the thing, so that I can vote against it as it comes up. Because even if we change the language, I'm not for moving to a sales tax. So if there's, if I'm going to make a motion, it would be to not include this in the whole legislative platform, and let me vote individually on it.
I'm making a motion.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think we need a motion. We'll just do that.
Just exclude it. Okay. Fine with me.
We can include that in the final motion. Let's go through here and make any changes, and then we'll, we'll make sure you get that opportunity.
Just know that that, that's the way I think.
So if we're going to keep it as is?
That's fine.
But just so I understand, the line from Commissioner Norton's comment, this doesn't say we're asking to go to sales tax or property tax. It says it gives us the ability to do that, and we can choose.
Is that correct? It gives us an option.
Right. Okay.
Next item is tax equity, part two. Any comments or changes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd feel much more comfortable if the last three, if the bracketed areas excluding minor adjustments, and then the brackets there were deleted. A little shaky on where that, those three words popped in, but I don't know.
I think they're in our existing-
They're in our existing platform, I'd like to try and-
But anyway, do you want to make such a motion?
I will make such a motion, if that's appropriate.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that, under F.A., tax equity, part two, the last three words and the brackets around them, excluding minor adjustments-
Second that.
Is, are deleted.
I'd second that.
We have a motion to second. Commissioner Unruh?
So the motion as it stands, then excludes the ability for technical adjustments after we finally know what the appraisal is and how the mathematics works out in relation to our budget. So we get a pretty close estimate of that each year, but when the final numbers are in, if there is a small technical adjustment, then this thing would preclude that. Up or down? Is that correct?
I will allow Commissioner Peter John to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, that would be our request as part of our legislative platform, but for the record and for the public here, one of the reasons I voted against the last budget was because we had that provision for technical adjustments and revisions for people who actually read their property tax bill. Their property taxes from Sedgwick County last year went up one tenth, a little over one tenth of a mill, which is a little bit larger than I'd call a technical adjustment or revision, but be that as it may, that's what I'd call a property tax enhancement, or, less politically correct, an increase. So when it says, when we put subjective language, which are three words excluding minor adjustments in place, I really think that what we ought to be doing as an elected body is not only sending a dollar amount for our budget, but also sending the mill levy. And under state law, we do the former, but not the latter. But in terms of this legislative request, basically saying if we need to raise the mill levy, regardless of the amount, and I'm not sure what a minor adjustment would be, we'd have to go to, get a majority vote from the, from the public. And so I'd like to delete those three words, and would recommend that to my colleagues.
I believe we have a motion and a second. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
What's the motion? I forgot.
I'll be happy to restate it.
Just to remove those last three words.
Or delete the last three words. Okay.
Yeah, on F.A., last three words of F.A.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
No.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransah?
Aye. Commissioner Norton?
Regardless of those three words, that's another one I want to have separate, because I'm not going to vote.
All right. Duly noted. Next item, Sedgwick County Health Department. Any questions, comments, changes? Commissioner Norton?
I'm fully engaged and supportive of Health Department accreditation. The state has moved forward on it. The Public Health Accreditation Board is an independent organization that sets those standards, and much like fire departments, forensics departments, many other areas of accreditation, police departments, jails, I think accreditation is not a bad thing. It's a national standard that we try to uphold. I don't particularly like that language. Certainly, I don't want to relinquish all control of the, our Board of Health to some national organization that maybe is creating mandates, but public health accreditation, I think, is important, because it helps us meet a quality improvement standard for our Health Department. So just in general, I won't be supportive of this item. Would ask it not to be included.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, Commissioner Norton.
I haven't been chairman in three years, but thank you.
Well, I haven't been chairman in four years, so.
Not a competition, only an exhibition.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, I'm going to be supportive of the language in F.2 on the Health Department side. We need fewer mandates from our federal masters in Washington, and I think the local Health Department serves a very important function, but we need to keep as much control as we can at the local level within this body that's responsive to the public here in Sedgwick County, and not, not so much to avoid the entanglements that come out of our friends in Washington. Thank you.
Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a point of clarification, does this amendment to our legislative platform, does it say we oppose accreditation for the Health Department?
Yes.
Okay. Then I can't support that either. Okay.
Well, I'll just comment, I'll support this. Health Department accreditation was originally funded and pushed by the federal government, the Robert Woods Johnson Foundation. It's not about quality, it's about control. We don't need the federal government establishing standards for our local Health Department. Local Health Department was created by the state legislature. If there are quality issues and standards problems, then that need to be addressed at the state level. When this was passed, I asked our health director at the time if we had any quality, quality problems at the time, and she said no, even though this was supposed to improve quality. This is just a Trojan horse for more federal intervention and control, and that's why I oppose it. We'll move on to the next item, driver's permits for illegal aliens. Any questions, comments, or changes? This is the new item to be added. Seeing, oh, Commissioner Unruh?
I'm not trying to prolong the meeting, honestly, Mr. Chairman, thank you, but is this, do we have any authority or responsibility on this? I mean, it's just, it doesn't affect Sedgwick County government one way or another, does it? Or, I guess what I'm seeing, this is kind of an opinion piece here, and I just wonder if, whether I support it or don't support it, I mean, I just wonder if we ought to include in our legislative agenda, you know, just opinion pieces. That's my question.
Well, I would say that this has come to light when Sedgwick, when Wichita put this in their platform, and we're all affected by illegal immigration. And when you do things to make it easier for illegal immigration to flourish, then you have more of it. And this is really what this is intended to do, is help move things toward amnesty, and which I can't support. It didn't work when Reagan did, it's not going to work now. And of course, all the financial costs that happen as a result of illegal immigration is burnt, is felt by the local taxpayers. There's plenty of data and evidence to show the billions of dollars that it costs taxpayers. I think we need to enforce the current laws and make everyone obey the law, and not make it easier for people who violate the law. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I'd like to say that I encourage the chairman to add this to the platform. I think there's several ways to solve a problem. I think the city of Wichita, you know, they did vote, I think it was a split vote, barely passed, but they encouraged the legislature to go ahead and take up this issue and allow undocumented workers, illegal immigrants, to have driver's permits. I think the primary reason for that was the issue of car insurance. Again, providing they have permits, they would be able to buy automobile insurance. I guess the legislature could certainly solve that problem. They could allow insurance to be purchased without a permit, if that's what they wanted to do. This is not really a requirement to buy insurance. And I don't believe that this permit's going to really encourage anybody to buy insurance. In fact, I would say if someone's driving without insurance, there's two ways to solve that problem. The best way, I believe, would be to enforce the law and to get those vehicles off the road. So the message to the legislature, I think, needs to be, needs to be in this platform, because they're getting mixed signals from different governing bodies. I like to register our opinion in, in opposition to what they've already given the legislature, and so I believe this is important. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The rule of law is important under the Constitution of this country, under the Constitution of the state of Kansas, and I strongly will be supporting this proposal. I think it's unfortunate that we are providing special privileges that certainly wouldn't exist if any of us were over into any, any of the other countries where these people who are illegally entering our country would be coming in from. So I will be supportive. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the next item, zoning comprehensive planning. Any questions or changes? Seeing none, we'll move to municipal elections. Any questions or changes? Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Had quite a bit of discussion with Commissioner Howell about this issue, and just trying to understand it. I have had contact from both communities in my district, not counting the city of Wichita, who are pretty much opposed to this. I'm just uncomfortable imposing my particular perspective on the communities in my district who have clearly said they don't support this. I realize it has to do with voter turnout, and I know that it's low in the springtime elections. It's really not very, it's not anything to brag about in fall elections, actually. But I guess that's my concern, in spite of all the arguments that might get higher voter turnout, my, the communities in my district say they don't want this, so that's just my comment.
Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see we have the election commissioner here, and I wonder if she would be willing to stand for a question on this topic item concerning the municipal elections and moving them in the fall. I'm very much concerned about the fact that, and I'm going to be supportive of this proposal, but I'm very concerned about the fact that there have been a number of times in the primary election, in these local election years, in the odd-numbered years, there's literally been no election to be held because there weren't enough candidates. And so basically, suppose that we had an election, turnout is so pathetically low, the number of candidates was low. And my question for the election commissioner was, would this make her job, if we moved the spring election from where it is today to August and November, for August primary and November general election in the fall of the odd-numbered years, would this make her job easier, harder, or about the same?
Well, you're talking about odd-numbered years at this point, is that what you said?
Odd-numbered years, odd-numbered local-
Well, I would like to start with the statement you started out with, where you said something about the primaries having low turnout and there not being enough candidates. Just to clarify and make sure everyone understands, and I think most of you do, in the city and school elections, there are no primaries if enough candidates do not file. So we do not hold a primary election unless enough candidates file. In the city elections, it is up to the city to decide how many candidates that is. The state has a state law, but each city can then ordinance out of that and determine. So like, we have a city primary for Wichita mayor right now, and for Wichita, city council, District Five. At this point, that's the only primary election we have this year, right now. Of course, filing deadline's still a little under a week away, and everyone's now filing last minute. For us, moving it, just from an administration standpoint, from our office, moving to the fall of odd-numbered years would solve actually a lot of issues that we have. One is, we are currently not compliant with state and federal law with the current election calendar the way it is. We are required by federal and state law to send out YOLOKVA, which is our military and overseas ballots, 45 days prior to any election, and we cannot do that right now. No one in the state can, because our filing deadline is after the deadline to mail ballots for the primary election. So we don't know if we have a primary or who those candidates are. And then the deadline to mail those ballots is actually prior to the primary for the general election. So we have not conducted the primary to whittle down the candidates, to know who should be on the general election ballot when we are supposed to mail those ballots. So that is a problem for us. I think the main issue with that one was, for many years, individuals who were overseas, military or local citizens, did not have the right to vote on local issues. And so this became an issue when the law was changed to say they have a, they have a right to have the same ballot that you and I get. So that's when this became an issue. So that is, that is the first issue that we have. The other is, we have a very short timeframe to conduct these elections. As I just explained, we don't even have 45 days between elections. And we have a lot of different municipalities making decisions on how the elections are conducted, and that, that does create some issues for us. Moving it to the fall of odd-numbered years for our office would just mean all the deadlines are the same. We could tell our polling places and our board workers, we need you these dates every year. That really simplifies it from our perspective. That's not addressing any other concerns, but it would simplify it from our perspective on the odd-numbered years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tabby. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is really not for the election commissioner. This is really just about the item before us. I'd like to hand this out. I add a little bit of language to this for you all to consider. Basically, what this is, is trying to address one of the concerns I've heard. I had a lot of nonpartisan elected incumbent folks, or people who had been elected in the past, contact me regarding some of their concerns. And one of the concerns they mentioned was, they were afraid of being buried on the ballot. We've got a lot of races on some rate, in some elections, we have president, U.S. Senate, U.S. Congress. And you get into the other state election, other state positions, statewide election, statewide officials, state representatives and senators, and then you have judges, and then, and basically, after the judges, it was the county commission ended up on the ballot, which I'm okay with that, but they're concerned about, basically following that order, should they end up in the even-year election, that they would be after all of that I just mentioned, and they'd be the very tail end of the ballot, and they're concerned of being buried in the ballot. So I would just suggest to the state to explore the idea of reversing the order of the ballot. And there's a KSA 25-611 that, that orders the ballot. I would like to encourage the legislature to consider, basically flipping the ballot over as a way to bring more attention and priority to the smaller races, the city and school elections, and should they be on the even-year, even-year elections. And so adding a language, basically adding on to the end of what's already before you, it says, I'll read the whole paragraph, "Sedgwick County supports legislation that would move municipal elections to the fall in even or odd-numbered years, and then to encourage voting on local offices, the state should consider reversing the order of the offices on the ballot." To me, that solves that, that problem, and then, so I'd make a motion to make that change first, and then I got some additional comments afterwards.
I'll second that motion. Go ahead.
Okay. To the, well, I guess we'll vote on that at some point, but to some of the other arguments that were made, someone commented to me that they don't like the yard clutter, they don't like the door trash. You know, we spent a lot of effort, I think, to get our message out to people who vote, and I don't, I don't consider that to be unnecessary, I don't consider that to be a burden in our community. I think it's part of our First Amendment. And so I do want people to have the chance to put yard signs out and put things on doors and try to talk to people who are running for these offices. The level of effort, trying to understand the level of effort for people to get elected in the, in the fall elections versus the spring elections, I don't really know why they're so much different, but they are clearly different. Virtually in every race in the fall, there is- Virtually, in every race, in the fall, there is expense reports that are filed. I looked at the city of Derby, the city council members and the school board members. I was only able to find one person in the last four years that actually filed an expense report. To me, that was surprising. What that means then is that no one else is raising money or spending money to get their message out. I've lived in Derby for 16 years this time. I've lived there before 1998, prior to 1998. But in the last 16 years, I have not had one person come to my door to share their ideology with me or let me ask them questions. And so, I'm relying on the newspaper to give me a single story generally before the election to make my decision. And I just think that's not, I consider that to not be a high level of effort. So, moving this to the fall, the weather's more conducive, the sun is more in your favor, you can have more opportunity to speak with voters, you have better weather, not so cold outside, people more willing to open the door and talk to the candidates. So, I think this is a very important point. You know, Secretary Kobach has made a point trying to get voter turnout up. I think we've all expressed a desire to get voter turnout up. But those are factors, the coldness of the weather, the sunlight, are reasons why this ought to go to the fall. And so, I'm a strong supporter of the idea of moving this to the fall for all those reasons I just mentioned. I would just encourage my colleagues here to support the motion as well.
Madam Clerk, do you read the motion?
The motion was to make an amendment to D-16, to the following new language. Sedgwick County supports legislation that would move municipal elections to the fall in even or odd-numbered years. To encourage voting on local offices, the state should consider reversing the order of offices on the ballot. And it's my understanding, Mr. Chairman, that that would modify the language here and not...
It wouldn't be the final vote. You'd have to vote on that here in a little bit.
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
I believe that's the intent.
That's correct.
We, I see no other comments. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
Next item is Kansas Threatening and Dangerous Speeches Act. Any questions, comments, or changes that would like to be proposed? Seeing none, my tally shows that there's three items that have been specifically excluded. Would somebody like to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to make the motion that we vote on all the items with the exception of D-14, which is the county sales tax chain, or becomes, that would become D-17. F-8, Tax Equity Part II. And F-2, that would be Sedgwick County Health Department.
Do we all vote?
We'd vote on all of the other items.
Vote to approve them?
To approve the other items, with those three exceptions.
We have a motion?
As amended.
As amended, that's correct. Should we have a second?
Second, Tab.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
So, now we're left with three items. Do we have any motions with respect to them? Commissioner Peter John.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move that we approve the county sales tax plank.
Second, Tab.
Just one of them?
Well, I don't have a problem with bundling them. It seems to me that they could all be, I would be the only declining vote, so it doesn't matter.
I don't know. I thought Commissioner Unruh expressed concern about the language in F-2. That's why.
Oh, okay.
The health department, Dave? Bottom of it.
Yeah.
What do you want? I'd be happy to.
Let's just take them one at a time, that's what. Okay.
All right. So, we have a motion, a second vote on the county's sales tax item, item D-4, that changes...
D-14.
The D-14, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I have Commissioner Peter John making the motion, but in writing, I did not get the second.
I am second, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Howell.
Are we good to go now? All right, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh.
Madam Clerk, this is on D-14, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
No.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
Okay, so now we're down to two items left. Do we have any motions with respect to those?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve F-8 Tax Equity Part II as amended.
I'll second that. Any comments? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
No.
Commissioner Norton.
No.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
So, that one passes three to two. We have one left, that's the health department. Commissioner Peter John.
I'll make a motion, we adopt the F-2 language on the Sedgwick County Health Department.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
No.
Commissioner Norton.
No.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
All right, by my count, we have addressed each of those items, have we not? Okay. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item.
Item K, Sedgwick County Modification to the 2015 Kansas Association of Counties Legislative Agenda.
Commissioners, you have that information before you. Most of the language you have already dealt with in our platform, there are a couple issues. One is Medicaid expansion and nuisance abatement in the energy policy.
Okay, what is the will of the board? Do we want to go through these one at a time or do them all at once? Do any Commissioners have a preference? My preference would be to vote them all at once, but I support them, so, but if there's any desire to go through them one at a time, like we just did, our own, we're certainly willing and able to do that. Any comments? Okay. Do we have any motions? Commissioner Norton.
Well, I'd like to eliminate the Medicaid expansion and vote on that separately if we could.
Okay.
We've already dealt with local health departments, is that? Need to read again. That's essentially been already covered in the health department accreditation on the other platform, is that correct?
Yeah.
Then Medicaid expansion would be the only one that I would like to drop off, if we vote on the rest of them.
Anyone else? Any motions? Let's vote the board. Commissioner Peter John.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion, and I'm willing to modify it if anybody has any last-minute concerns, but I'll make a motion that we adopt all of the items that are listed here, with the exception of the Medicaid expansion, and vote on that plank separately.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Commissioner Howell. All right, Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
Next, so the only one we have left is Medicaid expansion.
What item number is that?
That's K. It's not on there. You'll need to look in your backup material. Sorry.
It doesn't have a legend or a...
It doesn't have a number on it.
Yeah, or anything.
It's on page 211 in the backup deck.
Commissioner Peter John.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the provision. I know the Medicaid expansion, there's a lot of discussion and controversy on it. I'd like to have a little bit of dialogue on it. I would say, the reason I'm supportive of this, Medicaid is a well-established and very expensive program that has literally been a budget buster at the state level. With the changes coming out, the new mandates from Washington, it's getting worse, not better. It's a program that struggled with a great deal of fraud, abuse. It needs major systemic reform at the most basic level. And the proposal before the state governments at this point in time is basically to just do more of the same. And I think that's a recipe for more waste, fraud, and abuse. And so, I think we need to make clear to KAC that added this plank to their platform, that they supported Medicaid expansion, that we are not in support of the direction KAC is taking their policy and the recommendations that they are taking to the Kansas Legislature this year.
Okay. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, do we have a motion?
We have a motion, but not a second.
Not a second. I'll second. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
No.
Commissioner Norton.
No.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
And that completes that part, correct? Mr. Manager? The next two items are yours.
Commissioner Peter John wanted me to defer those to the next meeting.
And so did Commissioner Unruh.
Okay. Do we need a motion to do that, or can we just do that?
Yes, a motion.
Motion. I'll entertain. Commissioner Peter John.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we defer items L and M on today's agenda for our next meeting, until our next meeting.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item would be item N, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on January 16, 2015.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Director of Purchasing. Meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of January 16 results in two items for your consideration. The first item is electronic data interchange services for the Division of Health and Human Services. This recommendation is to accept the quote from TriZetto Corporation for an estimated annual cost of $54,000 and establish unit pricing for items two through four for one year with four one-year options to renew. And the second item is the Legislative Liaison for Cedric County Communications Department. This recommendation is to accept the best proposal from Watkins and Snyder Consulting, LLC, and establish contract pricing good through January 10, 2016, with two one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have and recommend approval of both items.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Do we have a second? I'll second. Any comments? I will say that in the past, I have not supported the use of our tax dollars for a lobbyist, because in the past, sometimes lobbyists have lobbied for things like tax increases and gun control. But I think a couple of years ago, I had, the help of Marv Duncan, who was our lobbyist at the time up in Topeka, get some storm management legislation through. And that has significantly changed my position on this. I feel a lobbyist just like a gun. It's a tool. It can be used for good, it can be used for bad, just to use the analogy. And we have some things that we want to do and some things we want to make sure get done and protect our interests up there. And having someone who can be up there to be used on the county's behalf and on the taxpayer's behalf, to protect property rights, individual freedom, all this sort of stuff, I think, could be beneficial, because there's no way I could have gotten that legislative patch without the help of Marv Duncan. He was very helpful, and so, I'll be supportive this time. And since that time, I've not expressed any opposition to using taxpayer dollars. It's just really about what they're being used for. So, with those comments, I'll ask Clerk to call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton. Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Ransah.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Well. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, you have the consent agenda before you, and I'd recommend you approve it.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the consent agenda, with the exception of item O.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
Any comments? We're going to vote on the consent agenda, approving everything except item O, which is the appointments. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransah.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, are we ready for item O?
Yes, we are.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the appointments as presented, with the exception of the appointment to the Cedric County Technical Education and Training Authority. I would, I would like to make a few comments, or do you want to get a second first, or...
So, you want to vote on all those and then talk about the next?
Well, I could go ahead and say that I would nominate Commissioner Jim Howell to serve on that board. I need to further say, this is not intended to have any disrespect to your authority to appoint, or any disrespect to Commissioner Peter John, who is listed as the appointee to that board. My thinking in trying to make this exception to what's presented to us is that I think Commissioner Howell brings with him some attributes that are particularly helpful in service to that board. He's worked in the aviation manufacturing, so he's familiar with the industry itself and with the specifics of what a lot of training would be. Commissioner Howell has just recently served in the state legislature, which the WATC, the school, and the board is particularly sensitive to what happens in Topeka, because a lot of the funding from the college comes from Topeka. And so, it's thought by many members of the board that Commissioner Howell would be particularly valuable in that respect. He has a record of, the Commissioner has a record of support for funding of NCAT and WATC in his time in the legislature, has experience in the military, and we're trying to serve a lot of military personnel. And then, I suppose also, I feel somewhat of an obligation to do this, and I've spoken with several members of the board, who, once again, with no disrespect to Commissioner Peter John, but they think that these unique characteristics would make Mr. Howell a good choice to serve on that board. So, my motion is, is that we support all the nominations as presented, with the exception of the Training Authority Board, and instead advance Commissioner Jim Howell's.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Commissioner Peter John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to make a motion. Needless to say, I disagree with some of the comments that have been brought forth, but I'm going to make a substitute motion that we basically adopt all of the appointments, with the exception of the SCTTA board, as it's put in our agenda, and we can have extended discussion on that issue and just get the other ones out of the way and then have more dialogue on it. So, I'm going to make a motion that we do a substitute motion, approve everything except that one appointment, and we can come back to that one. that one appointment, and we can come back to that one.
Second.
Okay. The motion is second to approve them all except for the SCITA appointments. Is that clear to everybody? Include the clerk. Call the vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Commissioner Norton?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransah?
Now, Mr. Chairman, in light of that, do I need to make a motion again? To appoint?
Yes.
All right, I will make a motion that Commissioner Jim Howell be appointed to the Cedric County Technical Education and Training Authority.
Commissioner Peter John?
I'm going to make a substitute motion on my own behalf, and I'm going to take a moment to speak on my behalf, because, you know, as, as the chairman pointed out at the beginning of this meeting, this was the first time in four years, and we're, we're in a, we're in a transition of sorts. And anytime a new Commissioner comes on, and I remember vividly what it was like in 2009, when I had the privilege and opportunity to join this commission and how much there was to pick up and learn. And the appointments are certainly an important part of, of being a Sedgwick County Commissioner, and this board is particularly important, too. I remember speaking in this very room as a citizen and taxpayer when the issues about the mill levy that go back to 2006 on this whole area came up. I'm going to speak on my behalf just a little bit personally today. Between 1980 and 1990, I had the honor and privilege of being a engineer for the most, most of the time. I was also in charge of manufacturing operations on the third shift at the NCR plant that operated 37th Street and Rock Road. Now, that's the NetApp plant today. And in that position as a quality engineer, I not only traveled all over this country looking at companies, looking at different business models, because NCR at that time was buying disk drives, tape drives, printers, computer peripherals all across the board. And the Wichita plant at that point was, in many ways, the cash cow for NCR with the mini-computers that they were producing at that time, and gave me the opportunity not only to travel all over this country, but I traveled to Singapore, spent several weeks in Japan, went to Malaysia, have international business experience. And while I certainly don't have the aircraft experience that Commissioner Howell brings to the table, I do have a international business experience that I think would be very helpful and useful going forward. And I think Commissioner Howell would do a great job on this board down the line, but I think at this point, it would be helpful to have a person who has been on the commission and isn't under quite the challenge of coming up to speed on all the issues and everything that the county has. Obviously, this is a interesting situation we have ourselves here with this appointment, but, but I do think that it's important that we look at this board that has tremendous responsibility for this community in the area of education, and the county's deeply involved in. We're going to be, the county is obligated to pay the principal and interest. I mean, it's just, in our last meeting, and let me rephrase that, our first meeting of this year, we voted on increasing the funding for National Center for Aviation Training and WATC, which is overseen by this board. And, but that's just a small part of the financial obligation that Sedgwick County has. And so I think it's important that we give Commissioner Howell a little bit more time to, on, on coming in on this, and an appropriate point down the line. I'm sure he'll be able to do an excellent job in serving on this board. And while I've never been in the legislature, I've spent a lot of time in Topeka and know an awful lot of the folks who are up there, and, and I think that Commissioner Howell has tremendous assets he can bring onto this, but I think I also bring some things to the table in terms of, on the State House side, too. So I appreciate the dialogue today, but I'd like to go with the provisions as we originally had, and, and I'm not sure how we want to handle the votes, Mr. Chairman, because we've done that differently and different ways, and be interested in more dialogue from my colleagues. Thank you.
No motion has been made, yet?
Yeah.
Could the Commissioner making the motion, please restate the motion?
I would ask him to, to take back his motion.
Oh. Okay.
It's not been seconded?
It has not been seconded, okay.
I'll, I'll make a substitute motion that we appoint Carl Peter John to the SCITA Board. Do I have a second? I don't think you need to nominate yourself, Commissioner. I'm proud to do it. I believe you are more than capable of fulfilling the issues, and you've been on this commission for six years, and I have the utmost faith and confidence in your ability, and I'm proud to nominate you and appoint you to this SCITA Board. Thank you. Mr. Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I surely hope my comments didn't imply that I lacked confidence in Commissioner Peter John's ability to serve. I just think that, two things. One, I think Mr. Howell has the capability to handle the different responsibilities. I won't repeat the qualifications I think that he represents that would make him valuable on the board, with the exception that in speaking with several of industry representatives on the board, they have indicated that they think Commissioner Howell would be the best choice from the commission. And I guess I might add, I think others in the community have had personal contact with Commissioner Howell to encourage him. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just felt like I need to speak up a little bit, and, and I have, Commissioner, Commissioner Unruh, thank you for your, your kind comments, and Commissioner Norton as well. I have had a number in the community ask me to, to, if you will wrestle for the position, if you would, but, you know, I, I've given this a tremendous amount of thought, and I've tried to, using, using a bridge term, I guess, to try to finesse, I think, the best answer. And we spent a lot of time thinking about it. It is true, I'm a, I'm a huge fan of NCAT. I appreciate what they provide for our community. I think they've got a role to, to bring people to our workforce that are desperately needed. That education is, is key to our, our prosperity as a county in the future. So I do appreciate what they do. I have, in the State House, worked for Senate Bill 155. In fact, I actually had a language personally that ended up getting, that ended up getting passed by the legislature and the governor, signed that law that actually allowed for private institutions, private schools to also access those technical, technical education dollars. A year ago, we were able to expand the law a little bit and allow the folks that are not in traditional high schools, but through, through graduation education programs to access some funding from the state of Kansas. It's been a tremendous, it's been a tremendous program, Senate Bill 155. I've been a fan of that as well. I do have great aviation experience. I do think I would really like to serve in this role at some point in my future. However, having said all of that, I have a great respect for Commissioner Peter John. And if I was going to characterize him, I'd say he's thoughtful and approachable. He's, he's, he always has reasoning as to what he does, what he does and why he does it, and I trust his leadership in that role. It is true that I am extremely busy, coming up to speed on the county commission. So I, I have appreciated the fact that he wants to, wants to serve, and he's been here six years and hasn't had the opportunity yet to serve on this particular board at some point in the future. When he feels like he would like to hand that off to me, I would be very glad to, to serve in that role. But I guess I would support the substitute motion and, and support Commissioner Peter John in his role. I think he's certainly qualified and he'll do a great job, and at some point in my future, perhaps I would be able to serve, but for now, I'd support the substitute motion.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Unruh?
No.
Commissioner Norton?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John?
Aye.
Chairman Ransah?
Aye.
All right, that concludes the consent agenda by my calculation. So now we move to other. Commissioner, do you need to announce that, Madam Clerk? Okay. Commissioners, this is your opportunity to speak. Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, and I know the meeting's gone a little long today, but, but it is a wonderful day for, and with discount rates at the Sedgwick County Zoo for Winter Wednesday, it's a great time if you want to get out there and see the facility. I, January 21st is an important day in American history, and I want to mention just a couple,